Going to get our council meeting started today with a roll call. So, Madam Clerk, would you please get us started with a roll call?
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Jean, and Council President Brandau.
Here. All right. Today, our invocation is from our own Assistant City Attorney Francine Kane. So Francine, if you'll lead us in prayer, and if everybody will stand, we'll salute the flag right after Francine's done.
Well, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon the city of Fresno. We ask that you give each council member wisdom and discernment as they make decisions today that affect the citizens of Fresno. We pray that the importance of each of these decisions is recognized and is carefully considered so that each citizen benefits from the outcome. We pray, Father, that you continue to bless the citizens of Fresno, that you provide adequate rainfall during the upcoming winter season, and we ask this through your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Today, we have one ceremonial presentation, and that's a proclamation of National Runaway Prevention Month, and that's from Councilman Baines. Councilman. Do you have a badge?
Is this on? Okay, great. All right. Good afternoon. I'm going to present the proclamation today for the National Runaway Prevention Month. And if I can have Jose and Crystal and Sarah come up. Yeah. So, these are all of our friends from the EOC Sanctuary. And so, here's the 40th anniversary of the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act. And really, what we have is we have a gym in Fresno with our local EOC and with the Sanctuary, always providing a place for our youth and a shelter, a place of refuge. And it is all but befitting that we give you all the proclamation for the National Runaway Prevention Month. So with that, who wants to talk a little bit about it?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Baines. Across the nation, 1.6 million youth are considered homeless. And in Fresno, in our public schools, last year, nearly 6,000 youth were considered homeless. So, we appreciate this recognition of this National Runaway Prevention Month, and we continue to do the work in Fresno to try to end youth homelessness through our emergency shelter, our transitional living program for youth, our street outreach team, and our permanent supportive housing programs. Today with me, we have Diego Lopez with our street outreach team, Joe Martinez, our coordinator for our safe place and our manager of our street outreach team, Sarah with our street outreach team. And I wanted to, this is all about youth, and to hear from the youth perspective is bringing awareness of this issue. So, we have Cameron Bennett. He's a resident in our Transitional Living Centers. We have 72 multifamily residential units for youth. They could stay there up to 24 months. And Cameron wanted to share a little bit about his experience to shed some light on the issue. So, Cameron?
Do I read the questions?
No.
Good afternoon. My name is Cameron Bennett. I am 21 years old. Bear with me, my allergies are pretty bad. We all know how that is. And I am here today to support the Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services and National Runaway Prevention Month. Before I had entered the Sanctuary Transitional Living Center, or as we know it, the TLC, I had been bouncing from couch to couch between family and friends. I was unstable and on the verge of being on the streets. Thankfully, I didn't get to that point, and I thank God every day for the blessing she has given me to be able to have a safe place to stay, which is the TLC, the Older Youth Program. It's a true blessing in disguise. Before the TLC, I was in an area that I was not used to, an area filled with drugs, violence, prostitutes, drug violence, gang violence. Whew. I didn't think I'd get like that. I was like trying to get dressed, and I was like, oh, I don't...
Hey, listen, I only do this because I have to come out here. Believe me.
I give you guys props. Eventually, I'll get there. All right. Oh, I do feel comfortable now. Sadly to say, it was even unsafe for just hanging out outside. And in moments, sadly to say, sometimes it was even unsafe to just be outside. I recall one evening, my friends and I had just went inside from hanging out outside, and in moments, a random man on drugs had broken down the front gate and ran through the yard to the back alley. It was for moments like that, there was always cops in our area for the simple fact they knew that at any point staying in, staying, it was... Wait, ooh. Actually, I do feel a lot better without. It's a lot, I've noticed in the past when I've spoke, it's a lot harder speaking like from something that you've written. It's a lot better to speak from the heart, I believe. My experiences at this program, let me tell you, it's been pretty awesome. I've met plenty of people. I've got, I've built relationships with not only the staff, but with other residents that are located at the TLC. But what I've learned, living at this program, was that I realized, because before I was in this program, I didn't have much hope for the future. But with this program, it kind of gave me hope, not only for myself, but for others. Because when it...
It's okay, you're too good. Thank you, Cameron.
Well, there's a lot... Because I feel like it's important to express that youth need to be, like, shown love, you know?
So, what I want to say is, I want to commend our EOC Sanctuary for putting a real-life face on what we face here in Fresno. Listen, Cameron, it took a lot of bravery for you to get up here and share some pretty personal moments with a bunch of strangers like us, and we appreciate that. I know very, in a very real way, how difficult it is to share moments like that. And you wouldn't believe this, but at one time, I was terrified to speak in public with more than like five or six people. So, I'm glad you unbuttoned your tie and unbuttoned your tie button. There you go. But it, listen, thank you, because it's happening in Fresno. And without organizations like our Sanctuary, I know we have others, but without those organizations in place, you know, part of that social safety net that we, that our residents need, we would be losing a lot of folks. So, thank you, EOC Sanctuary, for the tremendous service that you provide to this community. Thank you, Cameron, for your bravery and for keeping hope, you know, instilled in you and finding a pathway out. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you please read our proclamation?
Whereas November is National Runaway Prevention Month, and in partnership with National Runaway Safeline, and in celebration of the 40th anniversary of the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act, Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services, administered by Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission, is committed to protecting our nation's most valuable asset, our youth. And whereas Fresno's EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services provides a continuum of care to assist runaway, displaced, and homeless youth with successful transition from adolescence to adulthood, the Sanctuary operates an emergency shelter for 11-17-year-old youth in crisis, provides outreach services to homeless youth and families on the streets, operates three Transitional Living Centers to assist 16-24-year-old youth with preparation for sustainable, independent living, and maintains 270 safe place sites throughout the county to facilitate youth access to shelter and services. And whereas the young people with the least asset to essential opportunities and support are those in runaway and homeless situations. Between 1.6 and 2.8 million youth run away in a year period, in the city of Fresno, law enforcement data reports about 3,960 children as runaways. If all of us work together, we can prevent the situation that compel youth to run away from home. The city of Fresno supports the efforts of the Fresno EOC Sanctuary and Youth Services in working diligently to increase public awareness about advocate on behalf of and provide positive and safe alternatives to homeless and runaway youth and their families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen, and the members of the Fresno City Council do hereby declare November 2014 to be National Runaway Prevention Month in the city of Fresno.
Now, we're on to the approval of some minutes from a previous meeting, and that was on November 6, 2014. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
Remove.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now, on to council member reports and comments. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. Todd, are we close to...
Just need the folder to pop up on the computer.
You just have a brief moment here. What Todd's trying to bring up is a "Welcome to Fresno" sign that was recently completed by the Class 30 Leadership of Fresno. And I had the pleasure last night of attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony reception. And it's a beautiful sign, and it's going to be up there in a minute. But it's ironic, because it was almost a year ago to the day that Leadership 30 of Fresno came to us to ask us to bless and sanctify Sanctuary and take care of their needs for this sign. And I'll read from their original thing a year ago. "On this 21st day of November 2013, we seek Fresno City Council authorization for Leadership Fresno Class 30 to move forward with the planning and fundraising for this project." And this particular sign would cost over $50,000 if it came out of our budget here in Fresno, over $50,000. Because of their efforts and their unity and ability to approach people with fundraising and doing volunteer work, it cost Fresno zero. So, it came in under budget and under time. So, Leadership Fresno, congratulations. This is an amazing thing. And if you look at the sign, the redwood trim around it represents the giant sequoias and the tourism in our community. The black straps that you see around the redwood represents the manufacturing that's available in Fresno. This is all custom-made, by the way. And then, the lower-left corner is the symbol for the city of Fresno, and that represents the agriculture, that is the basis of our economy. And then, the river rock represents the rivers that we have, the beauty of having available to us for our water. So, that is a conglomeration of everything that we could think of, or they could think of, to represent our city. So, when you drive northbound on 99, before you reach Fresno, you will see that gorgeous sign. And just by way of information, the foundation behind the rocks, that was like three and a half cement, huge cement truckloads of concrete. I mean, this is a huge project. So, when we look at that, we can look at it with pride, and we can thank them, that is Leadership Class 30, and their project, and that works through the Chamber of Commerce here in Fresno. So, congratulations to them, and we are a huge benefactor of their efforts to come in under budget and under time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment and report to the council that back in October, the city accepted the president's challenge to be a city involved with the initiative My Brothers Keeper. And in talking with the administration, I am actually the point person for My Brothers Keeper here in Fresno, and I just wanted to report on our first activity out of that initiative was the Local Action Summit last Thursday. It was a fantastic turnout, a really good event, and I'm very excited to see how this will really bring our various organizations and institutions together, all and kind of working toward a single purpose. So, just wanted to let the council know that that was a successful event.
Thank you, Councilwoman Baines. Any other council members, reports or comments? All right then, we are on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, there's a couple of changes. The first one is Item 1E, item number 14-557. It's being removed from the agenda by staff, and it pertains to actions, excuse me, actions pertaining to the sale of a portion of excess property in the San Joaquin River Bottom, just east of Figgard and Golf Course. So, that's being removed from the agenda. And then, the 3 o'clock item, number 1, it is going to be strictly council actions. It's just the, so the whole council will participate in the vote on those two items. That's under that special joint meeting. And finally, Item 593, the first item of that particular agenda item, it's on page 10, it's being removed from the agenda, and the 2:00 p.m. special meeting notice that we put out is going to take the place, it'll be heard instead of that.
That last one was Item 593?
593, just the first item of that particular agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Because I think it has two, so only the first one.
Okay, there's two portions there, but it's the invoke exception section that's going to be...
Yes.
...removed?
Yes.
All right.
And that's all the changes I have.
All right. With those changes, do I have a motion to accept today's agenda?
Remove.
And a second? Second to approve today's agenda? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Those members to my right over here. Now, we're on to the consent calendar. I'd like to open it up to the public to comment on any item that's on the consent calendar only, and then council will vote. You have three minutes if you'd like to talk about any item that's on today's consent calendar. All right then, without any public participation, do I have a motion to approve today's consent calendar? Second?
Second.
Oh, all right. We have a motion and a second to approve today's consent calendar. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Yeah. Now, we're on to the general admin portion of our agenda, and we're going to begin with Item 2A. That's a claim of a certain amount of money and funds for uncashed checks, and that comes from our finance department.
Good afternoon, council members. Mike Lima, Controller, Finance Director for the city. We're going to see a lot of each other this afternoon. Before you today is an item allowing the city to claim approximately 18,500 of uncashed checks and unclaimed bond deposits. Under both state law and city policy, the city is allowed to recover unclaimed monies and return them to the general fund. State law requires that a list of uncashed checks and unclaimed bond deposits be advertised in a newspaper of general circulation for two successive weeks. After publication, there is a 45-day wait period where individuals have the right to contact the city to claim the funds. The list of uncashed checks and bond deposits was printed in the Business Journal on April 28th and May 5th of this year. Even though it is not required by law, staff sent letters to the last known address of the individuals who had unclaimed monies on this list. Additionally, if the uncashed check was related to a workers' comp claim, the city's workers' comp administrator also sent a notification letter. After both the legally required and additional means of notification, we received no claims from citizens. We therefore recommend the council approve the resolution before you, voiding the checks on the list, and authorize staff to move the monies into the general fund. Thank you.
Mike, are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right then, coming back up to council, any council members? This is a citywide situation, so it's not just one district, or coming from one district. Without council comment, do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for tuning in, guys.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Mike. General admin, Item 2B, is to appoint and authorize certain finance officers to the city of Fresno, and that is a presentation also from our finance department. Is that you again, Mike?
It is me again.
Well, you've got a couple of them today.
I've got, I've got five of these, so, yeah.
Wow.
Council members, before you is a housekeeping item that authorizes certain individuals within the finance department to sign various financial documents on behalf of the city. This item is occasionally brought before council when there's been a change of personnel within the finance department. As I was recently promoted to Controller, Finance Director position, my name needs to be added to the list of authorized signatories. We therefore recommend approval of the resolution that is before you. Thank you.
Any members of the public like to address this item? All right then, back up here at council, I'm going to make a motion to approve this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Item 2C is to approve the city of Fresno investment policy for fiscal year 2014-2015.
Hello again. Before you is a resolution adopting the city's investment policy for the current fiscal year. In its role as the treasurer for the city, the finance department invests cash that the city has on hand that is above the amount needed to fund current operations. The investment policy is basically the rules that govern what investments the finance department can make with the city's cash. There are no changes in the policy before you today from the policy that was adopted by this council last year. We recommend that you approve the investment policy that you have before you today. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right then, up here, the screen is clear. I'm going to make a motion to approve, staff recommendation. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right. Item 2D is actions pertaining to Copper Avenue Trail from Friant Road to Cedar Avenue, and that's our Public Works Department.
I'm going to throw Mike a monkey wrench for right now.
Yeah, needed a break.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Stephen Stone with the Public Works Department. We have before you to adopt an amendment to the 2002 Copper River Ranch Program, EIR Number 10126, and to award a construction contract to Yarps Grading and Paving Inc. of Fowler in the amount of $589,622 for the construction of Copper Avenue Trail from Friant Road to Cedar Avenue. It is intended to staff to build a trail from Friant Road to Chestnut Avenue ultimately when funds become available. Because of the limited funding availability, this project was, will be built in three phases, from Friant to Cedar being the first phase. When the current right-of-way issues are resolved and funding become available, Cedar to Maple Avenue will be the second phase, and then Maple to Chestnut Avenue will be the last. This project is currently funded by Measure C Trails Funds, as well as the developer impact fees. It is staff's recommendation to adopt an addendum to the 2002 Copper River Ranch Program, EIR Number 10126, and award a construction contract to Yarps Grading and Paving Inc. of Fowler in the amount of $589,622 to build Copper Trail from Friant to Cedar Avenue. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
Right on. Thank you, Stephen. Are there any members of the public, finally?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Jeff Roberts. I work for Granville Homes. Our address is 1396 West Herndon in the city of Fresno, and I'm speaking on behalf of the developers of the Copper River Ranch project. We're speaking in favor of the staff recommendation today, and we're anxious to see a trail constructed at this alignment where it was first envisioned about 10 years ago. We're also working, you should be aware, on a creation of a community facility district that'll be maintaining this trail in perpetuity, and that the property owners within the Copper River Ranch project will be paying for that. We appreciate your support for the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Are there anybody, is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item? All right then, back up here at council. Screen is clear. Stephen, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions about this.
Yes, sir.
So, when we approve this today, when do you plan, when will the construction of the trail begin?
It is I thought that it will probably start within about the next 30 days. It'll take us about two weeks to get all the necessary bonds from the contractor and execute the agreement.
And then, how long do you foresee the construction taking?
Right now, we are scheduled for about 45 days worth of construction. Because there's a planting and landscaping aspect of it, we would like to plant it either in the, in the fall or the winter, so while it's still in hibernation.
Sure. Is it, so this is a multi-purpose trail?
Yes, sir.
Biking and walking and jogging, that type of thing?
Yeah, it'll be our standard 12-foot-wide asphalt with concrete bands on both sides. Because it is in the CFD, there's also an enhanced landscaping aspect of it as well. So, we have been coordinating with Granville Homes to make sure everything looks very seamless.
So, is it similar to the one that just, the little pieces that just got put in, installed on Herndon Avenue? That seems like it's about the same. It's just pavement, but it's not super fancy, that one?
Yeah, that one has minimal landscaping, just as a part of our maintenance ability and so on. But this, because we will be responsible, we will not be responsible for the actual maintenance of it, it's actually the CFD that's responsible for it. We have been asked by Granville Home to go ahead and kind of jazz it up a little bit more.
Fantastic. Let's see. And this goes from Friant to Cedar, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. That's all I want to know. Councilman Brand.
Make a motion, we approve this item.
I'll second that. The screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Stephen. Now, Item 2E, that's a resolution to amend the city's water shortage contingency plan to allow outdoor watering one day per week during the winter season. That's from December through March. That's our Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President, City Council, City Attorney, City Manager. Staff's requesting with this agenda item that council approve, Department of Public Utilities, amend Table 9-3 of our Water Shortage Contingency Plan to allow outdoor watering one day per week during the winter season, which is defined as December 1st through March 1st here in the city. The part of this prompting came as a result of the community forum process. We got out and met with a lot of individuals about the community and the landscaping, a lot of companies called in and wrote in, and as a result of that prompted us to go ahead and look at our data and see how people actually, what's the watering look like, the outdoor watering look like in that December 1st to March 1st period. And turns out, people in the city of Fresno are very, very efficient with water, with watering in that, in that window, and about 96% of the outdoor watering is April through November and... is April through November, and four percent of the outdoors is in December one to March one. So after looking at the data and doing some additional analysis, staff recommends that we go ahead and amend the water shortage contingency response plan to allow one day outdoor watering during that December first to March first time period.
Tommy, are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right then, back up to council, Councilman Brand.
I thank our PBU Director, Tommy, for bringing the item that Paul and I had put on the Water Conservation Act to immediately. And just, just one question, Tommy. On the other items relative to the water shortage contingency plan, changing the triggers and the exceptions, are there any proposed timeline, want to address those?
Well, I'll be honest with you, we've been kind of working on the water rate one. So as soon as we get through that one today, then the whole lot of stuff is going to start happening. So we'd have some ideas on how we're going to go ahead and navigate through the water conservation elements, the water shortage contingency plan, and all of those pieces. So we've got a schedule for all of those items. We're working on to develop a schedule for all those items.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Brand and a second by Councilman Capriolio. The screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you, Tommy. Now we're on to the city council section of our agenda, and that's one item, ID dash fourteen, excuse me, fourteen dash six-zero-seven. That's a discussion and appointment of city council subcommittee on transportation. That's sponsored by Councilman Baines.
Thanks, council president. And I think you and I have talked about this a little bit over the past several months, and I know I've talked to the city manager about it. Some months ago, we decided that we wanted to have a subcommittee on transportation, really, to look at public transportation in the city and how we're managing that. I think we've, we've had a lot of information over the past few months on transportation. We've seen a couple of, we've got a couple workshops. And with the significant changes coming to transportation through BRT and the like, I think it's now time for us to form that subcommittee. And so what I wanted to do is go ahead and get the committee formed today and, and start talking about when, when we can, how we structure meetings going, going forth. And city manager wanted to make sure that you were okay with the timeline at this point. I know you and I have kind of talked about it. So, council president, if you can assist me in appointing a couple of members, I know myself would like to volunteer for that committee. I think member Capriolio as well may be interested in that, in that committee.
Of course.
And, and I thought, member, I thought yourself may want to sit on it, council president, but then I think you said no.
I thought that Councilman Olivier, didn't you show earlier in the year?
To council meeting.
We forgive you, we know you're coming back from vacation and so.
Yes, I seem to have, I seem to have left my, my brain in my, in my stateroom.
Earlier in the year.
I've called the cruise line, and they're delivering it.
Right on.
What's the question?
Earlier in the year, we had a discussion about transportation.
Yes.
And you showed some interest in sitting on ad hoc committee about transportation in the City of Fresno.
I'm interested.
You still are?
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like we're taking our show on the road there, members Capriolio and Olivier. So, council president, if you would duly appoint that committee of myself and members Capriolio and Olivier to the transportation subcommittee, and then Bruce, is it okay if we work with your office to, to set up the rest of the meeting schedule? Okay.
Councilman Baines, are there any other members that you're including, other than council members to the ad hoc committee?
Yeah, so what I'd like to also have is we want to have Rick Stites from ATU and Bryant Marshall, the transportation director. And I, I don't know if we had anybody beyond that at this point.
Are there any, is this the type of thing where citizens could?
Not at this point.
Okay.
I think we really want to first have an internal discussion. I foresee us in the future maybe having a, a public interface, but I think early on, we just want to have some internal discussions.
It's going to be you and me?
No, and Cap.
Again, the three of us, again.
Yet again, yet again, my friend.
Be Musketeers. Ride again. City Attorney, to complete this, do I just, do I make a motion and a vote?
Yes.
To approve this ad hoc committee?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay, so as council president, I will make the motion that we appoint Councilman Baines, Councilman Capriolio, and Councilman Olivier to an ad hoc committee on transportation in our city, and so others that they might invite to join them as well. So I make that motion, and Councilman Jong seconded it. We have an open screen, so all in favor? Aye.
Council president, I think you have to go out to the public.
Oh, good point. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? All right then. Councilman Quintero.
Councilman Baines, you might want to include or think about at a later date, one of the main groups that really, I believe is interested and has a lot of input into the transportation aspect of the city is the ADA Advisory Committee.
That's a very good point.
That you may have somebody there as a, as an advisory committee member, not as, you know, decision, but advisory.
That is, that is an excellent suggestion, member Quintero, thank you. We will do that as well. Thank you, that's a great suggestion.
Screen is cleared, now we can vote on my motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes seven-zero. Beginning of another wonderful committee. Fresno City Council. All right then, now we're at that point in our agenda where we're going to go into closed session, and I contemplate that we should be able to, we'll be back by three o'clock, we have some timed items, and I don't think we'll be back, I'll be back just a little bit before that. So, we're going to go into closed session, part of our agenda right now, and we'll be back in a little bit.
Yes, in closed session, we have existing litigation, the Carlton Jones versus City of Fresno case, real property negotiation concerning property on Kings Canyon with the Caesar Chavez Foundation, joint closed session with the City of Fresno and Successor Agency and FRC concerning real property known as the Kidney Lot next to Hotel Fresno and a remnant near Hotel Fresno, and also existing litigation concerning City of Fresno and Raps Fresno LLC concerning Hotel Fresno.
Man, I fumbled the ball in there, man. I fumbled, I fumbled the ball. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Totally. Yeah. We're going to get re-engaged here coming out of closed session. Councilman Baines forces, spend a couple of extra minutes in there. We're going to start with item ID, the ID of this item is fourteen dash five-nine-zero. It's a joint meeting of the City of Fresno, the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Fresno, and the Fresno Revitalization Corporation. So.
Is it me?
It's you.
Okay, so we have a couple of items. We're at the joint, we're ID five-on-one? I mean, we're five-on-one? Is that where you're starting?
Five-nine-zero.
Page ten.
Oh, page ten. All right here. Oh, five-ninety. Okay, we're going to be going with item five-ninety-first, successor agency to the redevelopment agency to consider and adopt the following. Categorial exemption pursuant to fifteen-three-oh-one, class one of the sequel guidelines, approved purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Fresno and Matthews Harley-Davidson, Inc. Marlene?
Thank you. The agency issued a request for proposal to purchase for four agency-owned parcels near the northwest corner of Abbey and Belmont South, a white and east of Blackstone. I think you have a map in your packet. And that resulted in a response by one party, Matthew Harley-Davidson, who owns a business, has expanded its business adjacent to these four vacant parcels. They responded, offering to pay the full appraised value of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So we're recommending approval of this purchase. It, of course, is contingent upon approval by the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance subsequent to your decision today. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak regarding this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. This is in my district, so I will make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. On to ID number five-nine-two, approve the First Amendment to Agreement for Disposal and Sale of Property to the Moose Family Center at fifty-twenty-five East Dakota. Marlene?
Yes, in March, the successor agency approved the sale of property on East Dakota to the family Moose, the Moose Family Center. They've occupied that property for some time, and they offered to purchase it, and the successor agency approved that at two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. We took this to the Oversight Board, and they denied the sale and directed staff to return to the Moose Family Center folks, requesting, or counter-offering the full appraised value of two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. The center has agreed to that, and there's an executed purchase and sale agreement in your packet by Moose Family Center. This also is subject to approval by the Oversight Board and DOF.
Thank you, I'll take this item out to the public. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais, and member Capriolio?
Move to approve this particular item.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, we have a second, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. ID number five-nine-three, actions pertaining to the owner, owner participation agreement.
That's the one. Counsel, if I may, here, we're substituting what's identified as item one there, the invoke exception, with an item sponsored by Councilmember Brand to amend the Better Business Act.
So we're taking this one out? Five-nine-three?
Councilmember Brand will be first.
Okay, so we'll move on to item five-nine-four, approve the purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Fresno and APAC International. Marlene?
Councilmember Brand is up now on his amendment to the Better Business Act, through the special meeting notice.
So we're gonna, so do I suspend this meeting and then go to the special meeting?
No, it's, it's a joint meeting, we can consider this as a joint body up here. It's simply substituting the item identified in the spur, item fourteen dash five-nine-three.
Okay, so, so just, so I don't want to overcomplicate this, but is it a council action, or is it a successor agency?
This is a council action.
So, right now, I'm in the successor, I'm in the successor agency meeting.
We're in a joint meeting, so you could take up either one.
Councilmember Brand. Sorry for the confusion.
That was almost as complex as our closed session. What this is, in May of two thousand nine, when I wrote the Better Business Act regarding gifts or loans exceeding a million dollars requiring a detailed due diligence scrutinization, I came back in August that year and wrote the Redevelopment Improvement Act, which essentially applied the principles of the Better Business Act on RDA property, because the law is totally different. As we all know, the RDA no longer exists, so in the original deal on the Redevelopment Act, it included an exemption for projects less than two million dollars that were either mixed-use and housing that had at least twenty percent affordable housing. And what I'm doing here is essentially applying that exemption onto the Better Business Act since the RDA no longer exists. And the major difference is, when we did, best example, Met Museum Granite Park, those were potentially future liabilities. We, we backed up two loans that eventually cost the city about twenty million dollars, where the RDA, when, for example, the one-point-nine million dollars for Hotel Fresno, that was money that was never intended to come back, that was essentially a gift. But, and that's also a legal mandate on housing set aside and requirements as a city. So, this makes an amendment, so if these things come up in the future, things that would have normally been RDA or successor agency items that relate to affordable housing up to two million dollars, they'll have the exemption pursuant to the Better Business Act. So I'll make a motion that we make this amendment.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now I'll take this item out to the public. Any person from the public wishing to comment on this item? Bringing it back to the dais, we, was moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Item passes six-oh with member, council president Brandow absent. So ID now number five-ninety-four, the approved purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency and APAC International. Marlene?
Counsel, actually, we're on item number two under five-nine-three, the OPA on.
Also now, okay, so now I move to the OPA.
Right.
Okay. So let me move to item number two under five-ninety-three, to approve the restated and amended owner participation agreement between the housing successor in the City of Fresno and APAC. Do I have a, we have to take, we have to move that in another motion?
Would you like me to?
Yeah.
Review the item, or?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Very briefly, the Hotel Fresno property is in escrow with APAC, a large, experienced, multifamily, market-rate and affordable housing developer. Hotel Fresno has committed to assign the OPA concurrent with the closing of escrow of the Hotel Fresno property. APAC proposes to rehabilitate the property into seventy-nine residential units, thirty-nine would be market rate, forty would be covenanted with affordable housing across a broad range of income levels and a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. And in addition, they are proposing to acquire the Kidney Lot at its appraised value and a city remnant piece behind the hotel property to build a parking garage to serve the development. The budget estimates the cost, construction cost, project cost, to be twenty-one million sixty thousand. The proposed funding plan would be a three-point-seven million dollar infill infrastructure grant, about four-point-four million of conventional financing, seven-point-two million of tax credits, two-point-eight million of historic tax credits, and a million sixty-seven of deferred development fees. The infill program has an application deadline of December tenth, and it's estimated that that award will be April of two thousand and fifteen. And then with that, APAC would apply for the tax credit application round in July. The restated amended agreement has a number of terms, but chief among them would be the termination clause, which says that if the borrower fails to get this infill grant and fails to get, in the alternative, multifamily housing program loan, then the obligation, the agency's obligation of the one-point-nine million would terminate. However, if they obtain either, then this obligation continues for one year while they fill all of the financing. fill, uh, all of the financing obligations. So, those are the, uh, termination points for this, uh, project. It serves as you are aware, a number of goals. It would preserve and rehab an historic property. It would provide affordable housing, uh, that is truly, uh, family affordable housing with a number of three-bedroom units. It builds a parking garage. It would avail ourselves to the last opportunity for the infrastructure grant, which will go away after this year. The state's no longer, uh, offering that grant. Um, it will revitalize, uh, downtown, and so, and also, it's a very good leverage with respect to our 1.9 million, um, at 39 units, 40 units. It averages to about, we're buying covenants for about $47,500 per unit. So, the leverage of local dollars is very good. We recommend your, uh, approval of this item. Uh, if approved, then we will, um, provide the developer with a letter for his application for the, the, uh, infrastructure grant due on December 10th. Thanks.
Thanks, Marlene. Now, I'll take this item out to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, to the dais, and I will make a motion, well, or should I let member Brand, uh, speak, please?
I promise I'll keep it brief. I just want to, uh, thank APAC and, uh, Mrs. Murphy and my colleague, Mr. Baines, for trying to keep, find a solution to the, this, uh, historic piece of Fresno real estate. But, there's a major difference between what we see today versus what we saw in 2011. You know, 2011, we saw a loan of, of highly leveraged project with only about 15% equity and a loan, loans over $12 million. We've seen a project today that's $4 million higher to reflect true cost, includes a parking structure, which was needed back in 2011, and has a loan of only $4 million. So, if we go from $4 million to about $12 million, that's a huge difference. An equity position of $10 million versus $2.5 million, if they are successful in getting their grants and the tax credits, this, based on their track record and the numbers I've seen, which I believe are realistic, would be a successful project. So, these are like night and day comparisons to what we saw back, uh, four years ago. Is that quick enough?
You're excellent, my friend.
I'll second.
All right, so I, I wanted to make a motion to approve that, member Brand, and second it, and I wanted to echo the same sentiment of member Brand, uh, in that, uh, we're encouraged by the relationship that we're developing with, uh, APAC, and we are, we are hoping for a successful outcome. So, with that, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item passes unanimously. Item ID 594, approve the purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Fresno and APAC International for the sale of certain former redevelopment agen, agency property located near the northwest corner of Fresno and H Street. Marlene?
Um, thank you. As I mentioned in the prior presentation, uh, APAC is interested in purchasing, uh, what we refer to as the Kidney Lot, um, at its appraised value of $710,000, and the purchase and sale agreement is in your packet. This, too, of course, will have to be approved by, uh, the Oversight Board and Department of Finance. Um, we're recommending your approval of this item, and I would just lastly like to mention, forgive my oversight, that APAC's representative, uh, La Fab Gujice, is in our, uh, chamber today, and, um, we just want to acknowledge, uh, his presence and the firm, uh, in going forward with this partnership. Thanks.
Thanks, Marlene. Now, I'll take this item out to the public. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring the item back to the dais. I, again, will make a motion to approve this. Do I have a second? Second by member Capriolio. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 6O with member Olivier absent, and that will adjourn the business of the agency.
Now, we are on to the 3:00 PM timed item number one. That's a joint meeting with the Joint Powers Financing Authority. It's a complete council action, and the presentation is from the Finance Department.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller for the city. Before you, is a housekeeping item that authorizes certain individuals within the Finance Department to sign various finance, financial documents on the city's behalf in order to facilitate investment of the city's funds into the local agency investment fund, or LEAF. LEAF requires a resolution of the governing body in order for certain individuals to transact business with them. As I was recently promoted to the Controller, Finance Director position, my name needs to be added to the list of individuals authorized to transact business with a LEAF on the city's behalf. We recommend approval of the resolution that is before you. Thank you.
Mike, are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, uh, the screen is clear up here. I make a motion to accept, accept staff recommendation. I have a motion and a second by Councilman Baines. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now, on to item 14-504, authorize, well, Mike, you might as well take it again.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, before you, is an item authorizing the city to advance up to $50 million to the Joint Powers Financing Authority for investment in the LEAF. Independent agencies within California are allowed to invest a maximum of $50 million in LEAF. Both the city and the JPFA qualify as independent agencies, thus both entities can invest up to $50 million with LEAF. As the JPFA has no cash on its own, the city can loan the JPFA up to $50 million of cash for the purposes of investment with LEAF. The end result is that the city is effectively able to double its investment with LEAF. The resolution before you will set up a demand promissory note between the city and the JPFA. The note can be recalled at the city's demand, thus ensuring the city has access to monies loaned to the JPFA for investment purposes. This investment strategy has been used since 2004 by the city. It is recommended that the council approve the resolution authorizing the advance of up to $50 million to the JPFA for investment into LEAF. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right, then, uh, back up here, the screen is clear, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with Councilman Brand. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Are you done today, Mike?
I'm done.
All right, hey. Congratulations. Now, we are on to the 3:30 timed, is, is that right? Oh, no, excuse me, the, the 3 o'clock, number two item, and that is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding city of Fresno Community District Number 11. That's from our Public Works Department.
Good afternoon, President Brandow, members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. Uh, we're asking you to hold a public hearing today and consider annexing tract 5967, which is on the east side of Polk between Shaw and Gettysburg, into Community Facilities District Number 11. That's a maintenance district, and, uh, we have received the ballots, and all owners of the property are supportive of adding this into the Community Facilities District.
Before I go to the public?
You know, I, I may have a conflict of interest here, because we have property we manage maybe close to this, so to be safe, I'm gonna recuse myself in this item.
Okay, all right. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back up to council, and, yeah, Councilman Jeong, that's in your district?
Staff, just a quick question, please. You said that you received all the ballots back?
Yes, we have.
There's been no, um...
No opposition. There's just a single owner.
Just a single owner? Okay. And, uh, we did our traditional, what, we sent out the notice 500, is it 500 feet, 500 yards around the facilities for a notice, or do we, what do we do in terms of community?
I believe they are all noticed, uh, within 500 feet. That's correct.
All right, just wanna make sure.
And we just didn't receive any letters of opposition that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I will go ahead and make a motion, please.
A motion and a second by Councilman Baines. The screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. And, thank you, Andrew. Now, we are on to item, uh, the 10A, uh, the, excuse me, the 3:30 PM item. That's 14-570. It's a public meeting concerning the renewal of the Fresno Clovis Tourism Business Improvement District, and that's sponsored by the City Manager's Office.
Good afternoon, President Brandow and city, Fresno City Council members. Um, today, we're here to, um, as you, uh, know, on October 30th, uh, the resolution was, uh, signed to move forward with the renewal of the Tourism Business Improvement District. So, today is for public comment. Um, it's the next step on our, um, renewal, uh, uh, business, order of business, and so, um, there won't be any action expected from you today, except for that we will be having public comment. Do you have any questions? I do have, I, I think you all have copies of the draft plan and all that from October 30th, but I do have extra copies if you need them. So, this, this renewal is for, um, starting 2016 through 2025.
Leila, are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back up to council. Councilman Brandt.
Wanted to voice my support for this item, that, um, I think we've, uh, but, last year, we, uh, made the change where the city funded the one position up to $100,000 to be dedicated to, uh, downtown events at the convention center. How are we doing so far?
Yes, and that's very appreciated by the hoteliers. Um, the person that we hired is starting on December 1st, so it took a while for the MOU and all the, you know, and obviously, we did a nationwide search, so that person will start on December 1, and, um, we're looking forward to him hitting the ground running, so.
Thanks, Leila.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
So, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Councilman Olivier, second.
I don't think any action is required of council on this.
Oh, it's, it's not?
It's not.
Okay. And there's always that. Right. Well, then, thank you, Leila. We appreciate it. Our next item is a, well, actually, I have three minutes, I can't take that item, so I'm gonna go to unscheduled communication. If there's anybody in the audience that, uh, we're going to, next, we're gonna have the item, um, an appearance by several of our citizens talking about Uber and taxi regulations. Prior to that, that's coming up in just a second, prior to that, are there any other, uh, this is unscheduled communication, so are there any citizens that would like to talk about anything else on the agenda or off the agenda? Yes, George? George Hostetter from the Fresno Bee, any action out of closed session?
No, nothing to report from closed session.
Thank you, George. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address any of the other items? Or... Yeah. It's not an item that we voted on, but he has the right to talk right now.
There was no council action identified, nonetheless, it was not identified specifically as a workshop, so it'd be in your discretion whether you want to allow public comment.
Well, I'm gonna allow it inside unscheduled communication. So, come on up, sir, take the microphone. We, we actually, when Leila was speaking, we went out to the public and you could...
I stood up, I guess, then she stood up again.
Oh, we missed you. I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
But this is, since that was not a voting item, what you're doing right now is just as effective, so...
Okay.
Well, just express yourself.
Well, because we already pay, uh, my name's Pradeep Bhakta, and, uh, we already pay 12% to the city and another percent, so we're trying to say that, in a way, we want to lower the TOT and increase the funding for the T-bid, if that's in any way possible. Because the TOT money should be going to increase tourism in Fresno, which it's not doing right now, in our opinion.
Okay. And what was your name again?
Pradeep Bhakta.
Pradeep, was that it? Was that your main point?
Yeah, main point, that we want to see something happen with the TOT in order for us to work with the T-bid, the tourism tax.
Okay. All right, well, you had seven councilmen that heard you, so, um, if you would like to give my office a call?
Okay.
We could talk about it more, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Sam Ramirez, actually Chairman of the Board for the CVB, uh, representing our hoteliers. Uh, what Prateek mentioned is exactly right. We actually are working on setting up a meeting right now with the CVB and the City Manager's Office to discuss the, the concept of the TOT. Um, we have all of our hoteliers that are in support of the CVB's mission, what it is that we're trying to do, increasing tourism, making this a destination, uh, bringing folks to this area, which helps increase the tax base and everything else. But there is a concern, as we try to self, uh, be a self-sustaining organization and no longer have that city funding from the TOT, um, there is a concern about the overall percentage being increased that's paid in our competitiveness with other, uh, cities in Fresno, in the, in California, trying to bring business to Fresno. Um, so it is definitely a conversation that we look forward to having. We want to make sure that the T-bid and the CVB are strong organizations, so that we can continue in our efforts and what we're doing, which benefits all of our hoteliers. Um, but there is a concern, as we said, with the, the TOT and the overall increase that will affect our, um, convention and visitors that are coming to the area. So, we do hope that we have an opportunity to discuss that, um, as we move forward in support of the CVB and the, and the T-bid efforts, but trying to work some sort of, uh, deals with the city and, and efforts, so that we can all be on the same page and working together, so.
Did you say that you had a meeting scheduled, Sam?
Uh, I, I know that Leila and the CVB are working, and her staff are working, they've been in touch, um, trying to get a meeting scheduled, um, with Prateek and, and some of the hoteliers that do have this concern, so we, we look forward to being able to have that time. I'll let Leila.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Um, we don't have the date yet. Um, the list was given to me on, uh, yesterday, yes, and, um, of people that wanted to meet with the city administration, and so Amy Fuentes, who is our representative for the mayor's, or the city on, on our board, has the list. She is working with, um, the City Manager's Office to set up an appointment with as many, there's quite a few, you know, that want to be a part of the meeting. So, and then, in the future, I also said if we, if they want to do a workshop, we can do a workshop, whatever, you know, to get, you know, any message out we need to, so...
Leila, when's the last time you did a workshop before council?
I did it in May this year.
May, that's what I thought, so...
Which was, I think, really helped with us getting, you know, opening up those doors and getting that money to, to hire that extra person, so I feel that we're on our way there, so...
Yeah, so why don't we do this after this conversation and after the first year, maybe schedule another workshop?
Sure.
Short little workshop to keep us up to date.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address any item before we move to the next, uh, agenda item? All right. This item is scheduled communication. Um, on our agenda, it's, uh, 14-467. It's appearance by George Aguilar, um, Al Makai, Juan Behar, and Mario Soto to discuss operation of the transportation company Uber and why the company is not subject to the city of Fresno's taxi regulations. So, when you take your turn at the microphone, give us your name and, and address, and then you've got three minutes.
Okay. Okay, my name's George Aguilar. I'm with, um, the concerned taxi owners and drivers of Fresno. My address is 725 West Pine. Business address is 175 North First, Fresno. And the consortium is made up of Yellow Cab, City Cab, Bulldog Cab, Asteca, Yosemite, Taxi America, and Taxi Latino. We're asking that the councils take some type of regulatory action against the operations of Uber, uh, you know, the, the TNCs, the, uh, transportation network companies that have emerged here in the past year or so. At first impression, one might think that the PUC in Sacramento has jurisdiction over this issue, because they're the ones that created this new, uh, public transportation mode, but we think it's of local importance, because these companies, these TNCs operate essentially like taxi companies. You pay for a ride and that's it, just that they take credit cards only, but the thing is they're not subject to any local regulatory, uh, scheme. They don't undergo, uh, inspections of the vehicle... They don't undergo inspections of the vehicles, there's no background checks, their insurance requirements is woefully inadequate. In fact, last month, they signed into law AB 2293, which is specifically designed to cover these TNCs. However, there's delayed implementation of the bill until July 1 of next year, because the insurance industry doesn't have a product to cover this. And then there's issues of the taxi drivers using their personal insurance as first resort, and then after, if it's insufficient to cover the claim, Uber's insurance will be used. In other words, excess coverage.
You go in.
Okay.
Yeah, you got it.
And, secondly, other cities have taken, or undertaken the effort to regulate this company. The city of LA, they issued a cease and desist order against Uber. The San Francisco Transit Authority has also filed numerous lawsuits on behalf of the taxi industry there. And one has to remember that, you know, the traditional taxi company is an integral part of a city's transportation system. And the presence of Uber is destroying it. And I'm not talking about taking the money, you know, from business, you know, everybody wants competition. However, the playing field is not level. They don't have to undergo any type of scrutiny from the city. And another thing, the state tried to pass AB 612, which would have required drug testing and alcohol testing and background checks. It was defeated. So in other words, the city knows what every taxi cab owner and driver, who he is, what he does. Here, there's zero oversight, zero oversight. And a lot of these Uber drivers are using taxi stands here in Fresno, you know, taking the places from there. And then apart from that, the Uber operators don't pay any city taxes. And what are they, independent contractors? Do they get 1099ed? And what we're saying in essence is that this new category of transportation, you know, the system is not set up for it. And even EDD has yet to issue regulations.
George, let me ask a question. Are these other gentlemen gonna speak also, or was it just you?
It's you.
There were a couple of other gentlemen that we had on our list, Juan Behar, Mario Soto.
Yes, they're here.
Are they also wanting to speak?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna limit you and I'm gonna let them come up. They'll probably share part of the story also, and then we can bring any one of you back up if we want to.
Afterwards, can I have a 30-second summation after this?
Yep, I'll bring you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the city of Fresno. My name is Juan Behar. I am a part of the owner of the taxi Asteca from Fresno. We've been in business for 20, over 20 years. And like you're saying, here in Fresno, this company came to make a business. And we believe that all the taxi drivers and all the companies, they are not operated legally in Fresno. We have all kind of insurance, real expensive insurance. We pay about $4,500 a year for each cab. And Uber, I don't know how much they pay for each cab, but I believe so, they don't have any insurance. They might have insurance, but enough for the taxi drivers that work in the street. These are not the taxi drivers. These people, these came to use their own vehicle, and they started working to make their own business. We had all kind of the regulations in Fresno to be a taxi driver. At least we need, we have a, at least a class to be a taxi driver, eight hours for the, one of those officers in Fresno. They give it to each taxi driver class, to everybody. And they have to have a good record to be a cab driver, to be in the street, to be in Fresno, to be a cab driver. And besides that, we have a meter, and it's taxi, and regulated for the waste in meters. These guys, they don't have no taxi meters. How they've been working? And they don't have background criminal records too. So anybody could be working for that company. But taxi drivers, we have to have all the regulations here in Fresno for the city of Fresno, taxi, city of Fresno regulations. So I just let you guys know to see what's going on, but that's all right to us in the industry for the taxi drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. How about Al or Mario?
My name is Al Mackey, and I own the Yellow Cab, City Cab, and Bulldog Cab. My address is 1356 North Abbey, Fresno, California 93703. Just wanted to mention a few of the cab company expenses. Myself, I pay $50,000 a year insurance, commercial insurance. I pay $2,500 that permit to the city of Fresno to operate the taxi cab, plus and minus. I pay $1,200 every year for inspection, to inspect my cab, plus or minus. And I pay the commercial license plate, the fee for DMV is almost $1,100 for, you know, for the cab I have. And plus the expenses, I pay repair and tires and other things. I compare myself with the Uber and Lyft, they're walking in the city, and they don't have any permit, they don't have any nothing, and city doesn't do anything about it. And they don't have any insurance. Even the state said insurance is gonna kick in the 1st of January. But right now, we are in November. They started on March. And if one of those city of Fresno citizens gets hurt, who's gonna be responsible? Uber not gonna be responsible, because they're giving 1099. The driver, driver doesn't have anything, you know, and just, it's unlucky. The passenger gonna be unlucky. And the city of Fresno is not doing nothing about it. They are kind of quiet, and I don't know what's happening. Because my 50% of my income is gone. And I'd pull five taxi out the road, and sometimes the driver comes and apply for a job, they have to go to school. They have to wait, because once a month, they have a school for the driver. I don't know why. But Uber doesn't have any school. I have to get a fingerprint. They don't have any fingerprint. I have to get a smog every year. They don't have any. Right now, I have a cab with the sensor, like airbag sensors on, there's a lot of recall for those. I asked the city if I can put it back on road till July to replace it. They said no. But Uber, they don't know if it's driving without, with check engine lights on, or airbag sensors lights on, nothing. They're operating, they're making gravy, and just making, hogging all the money in their pocket. And I have to put about like 15 hours, 14 hours to make the money and pay the bills, you know, and pay my tax. If I don't pay my tax, city gonna suspend my license. I cannot operate. If I don't pay my insurance, city gonna send me a letter, you know, you have to be suspended. And if somebody complained, my customer complained to city, they're gonna suspend me. They're gonna get me in there and make a hearing and all kind of stuff. I don't think it's fair to all taxi cab company, owner, driver, and everything. Where the Uber and Lyft comes in, they get their own cars, they do anything they want. And, you know, just wanna let you know the point of the cab business. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Al. And how about Mario?
Good evening, city council members and presidents. My name is Mario Soto. I live in 1435 East Cambridge. I'm a taxi driver for 15 years here in Fresno. The reason why I'm over here, because I feel like something going on, and I'm not having a fair feel to work and make my own living. I'm not talking about them. I'm talking about me. Before Uber comes over here, I'm gonna show you this. And my purpose for this is not to make Uber show bad, okay? My purpose for this is you guys to know, first of all, transportation carrier has no responsibility for any transportation service provided you by third party. What does that mean? If you get into those cars, and you have an accident, who's gonna pay for it? All these cases you guys see it over here, they are unsolved, because nobody is responsible. I'm a driver. I have to pay for my own permit to be a driver. I have to pay my taxes here in Fresno. Before Uber, Lyft, and all those peoples come over here in Fresno, I used to make the double of this money. Now, I only make this money, split it by two. Before Uber and Lyft and taxi cars come to Fresno, I used to make 20 calls. Now, I only make nine. I can't feed my family with this. Please, please, we have almost a year asking to the city of Fresno for help. Nobody's doing nothing. Help us. We need help, because I need to feed my family. I'm a poor person. I live in an apartment like a pig, burning my body 12, 15 hours a day and night to make this money. And they blaming the driver for Uber are making $95,000 a year. That's not fair. And that, because we can't compete with them. I drive for taxi, and I go to Elbow Room, some of the people don't serve room. We used to make good pickups over there. Now, nobody use us because this, because this. Look, where is it? Right here. No, this one. Uber doesn't have content for traditional taxi cab system and dreams of their destruction. They want to destroy us. They're not a good people. What happened if any of your families goes into that car, cars like that, and happens something to them? Who you going to blame to? City of Fresno can blame to us if we do something wrong to the people. So please, again, help us. We need help. Thank you.
Thanks, Mario. All right, George, why don't you come back up and finish this off? Then Councilman Olivier's gonna make a few comments and maybe some others.
I just wanted to say that I hope the council has the fortitude and foresight to take some type of regulatory action, or in the interim prohibit the operation of Uber until the new insurance requirements go into effect. And another point is that Uber doesn't go to southeast Fresno, they don't go to west Fresno. And that's very bad, because they're destroying the traditional taxi system, and it's gonna be bad for the city.
Just really quick, I just wanna tell you, they do come to southwest Fresno. They do come to southwest Fresno, just FYI.
Okay, well, that's what I've heard. Anyway, the taxi industry is a part and parcel of the image of a city. And I'm gonna include Uber, because they, like I said, in essence, are a taxi company. But they've got a tremendous lobbying front that somehow persuaded the PUC, because you gotta remember, in the beginning, the Public Utilities Commission had prohibited Uber operations in California. That was in July of last year. And then two months, and they fined him $20,000, said he can't operate in the state. For some strange reason, two months later, they reverse their decision in that paperwork I gave you. There's a decision modifying the previous decision. But city manager Rudd knows that, he's been to a few meetings with us taxi guys, and the city has to regulate the operation of taxis. Like I said, it's like an image situation for the city. The members of the council or city staff doesn't know who is operating these vehicles, where they've been. It's very strange, there are unmarked cars, they don't pick up handicapped people, they don't have any of the, like, embrail and so forth, none of that. They're like exempt from all governmental regulation. And like I said, the cities of LA and San Francisco have moved forward, we're hoping that you'll do the same. And like we said, just outright outlaw them, prohibit them from operating here, at least during the interim until the insurance situation is somehow fixed. Because I mean, the state of California hasn't been able to deal with it. But that's about it, okay?
Thanks, George.
All right, thank you.
All right. Councilman Olivier.
Thank you. And the reason why I took the lead in making a few remarks is because I've worked with this group in the past, to try and bring them some relief. And council colleagues, you remember when this item came forward? We changed the amount of time that cab drivers could keep their cars. I think we extended it from seven years to 10 years. We were told by city staff that if we extended it any longer than 10 years, that we'd be risking human lives, and that people would die possibly if this council let these fine gentlemen keep their investment longer than a period of 10 years. So we backed off, and we said, okay, the council will allow them to keep their vehicles an extra three years, because we realize the pain that these folks are in right now because of Uber. So basically, what we have right now is we're still in a situation where the city of Fresno is contributing to the demise of this industry. I completely agree with you, that because of the heavy regulation that you're under, we are putting you out of business. And so I applaud you for coming here tonight, and I thank you for coming here tonight. And it's an issue that I would like to take up, because the answer here is to set them free to compete with Uber. You all know how I feel. I know that you have asked us to prohibit Uber in our city, you asked us to close them down, or shut them down, or kick them out. That's not where I'm at. Maybe there's some council members here who are, would be okay with coming up with some kind of ordinance like that. But that's not how I feel. I think the best thing that this council can do, and the best thing the city can do, is to completely deregulate you so that you can compete in this industry. If you're going against a competitor who's driving his own car and doesn't have to go through this, these inspections, that I'm very familiar with, I know they're very difficult for, it's a difficult process for you to go through all the time. You know, basically, you are under the city's gun, and there's a whole group of your competitors, business people who are not. So I think that if anything comes of this, I know it's just, it's scheduled communication, it's not an action item, but the best thing that we can do as leaders, and the best thing that we can do is not pick winners and losers, but the best thing we can do to protect these people and their businesses, and their families, and their livelihoods, is to set them free to compete with Uber. Because right now, if we continue this way, it will be the city of Fresno that puts them out of business, not Uber. It's the city and the regulations that we have in place that are keeping them from competing on a level playing field. We're picking winners and losers, and that's not fair. So if we can come up with some kind of package or something to set them free and allow them to compete in a free marketplace, that's what this country is all about, and that's what America is all about, let's let them go. And be the first city to do this, not the first city to regulate and the first city to oppress small business, but the first city to open this up and say, hey, our cab drivers are just as good as Uber drivers, and let them compete. So those are my comments, and I thank you all for coming forward and speaking. I know this is, I know this is keeping you awake at night. So thank you for your comments. Thank you, council colleagues, for hearing me out.
Councilman Jean.
Well, at least on the Uber issue, I was wondering when this was gonna come up. Bruce, I don't recall us talking about Uber at all, period. Have we talked about Uber?
No, and nor do I ever recall comments that people are gonna die if they don't have vehicles.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, Bruce. I mean, I've heard of Uber from...
That's what I was told.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Councilman, let me have the floor. I've heard of Uber through different channels, and I know I was traveling down through the valley, there were issues with regulations and so forth. And at least, it was just a matter of time, I thought, that this issue would arise, and how the competition issue would be raised. Now, let me be clear on this, folks. I'm not as far as my colleague over there to deregulate, because we start deregulating, I don't know which industry we begin with, whether it's you, whether it's the next industry or not. I mean, there's a certain balance that we try to keep here all the time, and I'm not sure of deregulation, the entire, whatever government that my colleague wants to go with, I'm not that far off, okay? I'm not that far away from where he is, in terms of going deregulation. But I understand, but I do believe that the city should probably look at the Uber issue now that's been raised. And I just wanna let the taxi cab drivers, at least publicly, this is the first time that the group has brought forth Uber to the council, okay? So I just wanna make sure that you understand it. This is the first time that the industry has brought forth Uber publicly to the council. All the other items that we've heard have been about regulations or some of the things that we have with the taxi industry. But I do believe that, in a sense, it is now here, that this council probably should look at what that means to our industry, look at the impact of Uber. Look at the impact of Uber in our industry. And that's probably, you know, probably a workshop next year.
Preferably after January.
A workshop to, to just kind of see what, what that means and then look at some of the, some of the cities that have taken action, whether it's LA, San Francisco, and what does that mean? And, and I think, you know, there should be some options as to what this, the body should look at in terms of policy. If, if the city wishes to say that they want to deregulate, that is an option that I would recommend that it shouldn't be just one industry, that, you know, it should be every industry and, and that should be given to the council members, what all those industries are that requires deregulation. But I think it would be an equitable process. But with that, Bruce, I, I think they bring a legitimate issue that the bodies should consider about what's next for Uber and how it affects our, our local industry here. And, and hopefully, you know, if the body wishes to follow what other cities have started to do, then that's an option that should be made available to, to the council body to, to look at.
And if I could, very quickly, council member, the reason the regulations are there is, is indicative of, of the state of the taxi industry in this community about seven or eight years ago. And complaints that we're getting from the community, from the CVB, from others over the overall condition of, of the taxi cab fleet as an overall condition of taxi cab fleets. Uber, Lyft, these two entities or others have come into the market within the last two years. I have done some preliminary research and this is not a California phenomenon. State legislators are trying to figure out how to deal with this. There is a heavy lobby from Uber. There is also a heavy lobby from the taxi industry. I can tell you based on the research I've done, there are cities all over this country that are trying to figure out what to do. Everywhere, from New York, Boston, some of these cities who have had medallion systems in place for years to control the market, something that we've never done, San Francisco included, are struggling as to figure out what is, what to do. Because in those cities, those medallion revenues are used as general fund revenues to support ongoing city operations. So in those cities, there's kind of a vested interest in trying to regulate or control the marketplace because again, there is a vested interest in doing so. Nevertheless, I will work with the city attorney. We will bring you back a workshop and identify what's being done in California, what regulations are currently being considered or put in place and what other options cities have taken or adopted in order to address this. But it is a unique phenomenon unlike the newspaper industry, and if George is still around, in which technology has, has completely changed that marketplace. And where and how we get our news and our information is, is, is no longer, well, in a lot of ways, is free. So what's happened is Uber and Lyft have come into a marketplace with an app that somehow, for whatever reason, in the industry, taxi industry needs to ask itself this, resonates with the consumer. If it didn't, it wouldn't be the success that it is. And financially, it is a huge success. And I know there are people who may not or would choose not to use a taxi who have told me they will use Uber because they know, they get to see what kind of car they're going to be in, they get to see the driver, and they feel a level of comfort with that. But we will certainly schedule a workshop in the month of January and provide that information back to the council as what your options may be.
Yeah, I mean, you know, from, from the little that we do know and from, from Uber and some of the things, I think it's just, even with us up here, I can definitely sympathize in, in terms of the level of playing field that, that the industry is looking for. Obviously, you know, if, if those are some of the issues that, that you can clarify that, that Uber is operating in a level playing field or to a certain level, what, what the, what we expect from the industry, then, you know, I think that's, that's a different level of discussion. But if, if the industry is coming in, operating a similar type of services, yet doesn't have the same type of concerns that we require in the industry, then that's a different type of discussion. And so I think that, that clarification needs to be met. If this is just a competition issue, then I don't think I'd be up here talking. If, if all we're talking about is competition. But I think there is some depth in terms of the issues that is brought, that I think it's a little bit more than just a competition issue. And, and I can be wrong, you know, if the, if the workshop comes up and maybe I'll come in and listen and says, it, all it is is just competition, then, then so be it. But, but I think the issue is deeper than just competition that, that we have. And I think it's a relevant issue for, for this body to weigh in, especially when it impacts a transportation, part of our transportation services that we are, that we include in a lot of things that we do. That's all. Thanks, Bruce.
Councilman Olivier.
I just, I, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Jean who, who asked me or, or somehow brought up the question of, would it be prudent to deregulate every industry? And my answer to you is absolutely. I think this council should deregulate every industry in the city of Fresno. I believe that if you want to see job growth, if you want to see companies come here, I think if you want to see this city grow and prosper, I think what we should do is we should have a workshop about deregulating every industry in the city of Fresno and set business people free to compete in a marketplace where cities are not trying to figure out what to do to control a certain segment of our economy. And I mean, obviously, the city of Fresno has an interest in clean hotel rooms and the city of interest, city of Fresno has an interest in, in, in quality food service because it affects people who come here as tourists and on business trips and gives us a black eye if they go to a restaurant and go have a bad meal. It's the same thing, they get in a dirty cab. I mean, the best thing that we can do is set these small business people free to compete. And, and I guess the last thing that I'll, I'll ask Al or, or anybody, are, are, you said that your, your taxi service was ten and now it's five. Where are your drivers going? Are they going to Uber? Are you, are you losing taxi drivers to Uber?
I was going to mention that most of the taxi drivers are going to Uber because they don't have to pay any expenses. They, they go buy a car for three thousand dollars, like they're old seven, and they put it on road, no check, they don't check the brakes, tires, nothing, the car, nothing. And they are making money.
So the, the market is, and thank you, Al, the market has found a way to subvert what we're trying to do here, which is regulate a taxi industry. The market is subverting us and, and, I mean, they're asking us to regulate their competition. What if, what if we had McEwen and Boren and Will Fleet at the time here, standing here at the podium, asking us, please do something about the Drudge Report. Please, please, regulate the internet because it's putting us out of business. It's the same thing. They're asking us to regulate the new technology that's putting their industry completely out of business. It's the exact same thing. It's not apples and oranges. So the, the only thing that we can do, there's no way we can regulate our way out of this. The only thing we can do is to set them free. We would be the first city to do it and we would be, we'd be a shining light in this country as other cities followed suit and we preserve this industry. And that's all I have to say, so thank you.
Councilman Baines.
What, was he, I was going to respond because he did respond. Okay, I'll let you go because I was, I'm a short timer anyway, so I just, I just deregulated myself from service up here, so I'll, I'll go ahead and let you respond.
Well, I, because I wanted to respond to you too, Councilmember Jean. I, I actually think a workshop is, is appropriate, but I'm not at all convinced that it's more than, it's anything deeper than competition. So let me just be honest with you. There, there are some very valid points I think the taxi industry raises, but I'm not exactly convinced that it's more than competition. Competition's a tough thing and I've had the benefit of both using the taxi service and Uber and there's a qualitative difference between the two. And it is competitive. And so, I echo the sentiment of the city manager, this is, and I'll go a step further, it's a worldwide thing happening. It's not just California, it's not just in United States, it's happening in, in every first world country on the planet where this discussion is going on between how countries regulate Uber and taxis. So while, while, while we're going to wrestle with it in, in our municipality to some degree, and I'm not sure how far we should go in either direction, to be honest with you, I think we should have a, an analysis of what, of how we regulate the taxi industry. I think that's a fair question as, as opposed to Uber, but we are talking about competitiveness. And we are talking about qualitative differences between the two. And I would, you know, and, and I feel very bad for the taxi industry. I, I do. Because it's going to be tough. No matter what we do, it's going to be very, very tough for taxis to compete. There's, it's going to be impossible to regulate Uber to the degree that it would make it fair for the taxis unless we just became Big Brother. And, you know, that, that really, that really is just probably not, not feasible. The regulation and, and, you know, really isn't a viable course. While I respect and know my friend, Councilmember Olivier, and he's very serious about, you know, letting all the little birdies go in the whole city, in the whole world for that matter, that's really not practical. And he knows that, but we're friends, you know, we know that we can't do that. So the, the reality is finding something in the middle. I'm not sure what that is. I'm not sure what, what, what middle ground there is. LA, San Francisco, I've looked into this, you know, they have an outright ban Uber, you know. They, they did in the beginning to figure out what to do, but they've since come to compromises that, you know, allow those, allow that industry to operate. So I'll just say that I'm, I, I agree sometime next year, we should have a workshop, we should do an analysis and we should look at it, but I don't, I don't want to give any false hope that this, that this body's going to come up with some groundbreaking, earth-shattering thing to totally level the playing field because I don't know how that could happen. And I wouldn't be supportive of something really drastic that would. So it, it just is, it's a tough thing. But it is competitive, Councilmember Jean. It's very much a competitive issue. The, the services are very different. They're not exactly the same. They do the same thing, but they're very different services. So it's going to be tough.
All right. So now, you just punched in again and let me go and then if you'd like to...
I'd sum it up, Steve.
Okay. All right, so here's what I see. Well, A, it's not, this is not just competition. There's two teams here. We're, we're taking guys and saying, okay, we're going to run a hundred yards. You guys get to run free. We're going to put ten pound, ten pound weights on each of these guys' ankles. And then, then, then we're all, then when they lose the race, they're going to be the losers, the other guys are going to be the winners. So it's not apples-to-apples competition. Now, but more importantly than having a philosophical debate today, we're going to have a workshop. This is very important because what I see in front of me are hard-working Fresnans, right? And they have a valid complaint. I think all of us up here on the dais can see what's happening to them. And, and we, there's going to have to be a decision made. Here's what I predict is going to happen. We're not going to do anything. These guys are going to go out of business. Uber's going to go to the top. Once they're at the top, they're going to start screwing things up and then we're going to want to regulate Uber. But the, in the meantime, these guys will all be gone, out of, out of business. So there's, there's a lot of problems that could happen if we don't address these situations pretty quick. So I hear what you guys are saying, like my colleagues, I don't quite have the answer right now. It's whether to deregulate your industry or regulate Uber, but right now, we're not having apples-to-apples competition. And it's not fair to the gentleman sitting in front of me right now. He's, and, and so that's the way I feel about it and that's the way I'll be looking about it. And I guarantee you, we'll have a, we'll have a conversation about this in January. So hang tough, guys. Work with us, give us some ideas, you know, and keep us informed of what's happening in your industry. All right, the screen is clear. Fantastic presentation today. I want to thank all of you guys for coming. And this is exactly why we have council, to hear from our citizens and our business owners and so forth. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now, we are on to our, a four o'clock item.
Yeah, one more scheduled.
Oh yeah, you're right. I have one more scheduled. This is fourteen dash five eight two and it's appearance by Parvis Lahayfar to discuss who is responsible for the expenses of moving a signal light at the corner of Shaw and Polk. Parvis, come. You have three minutes, my friend.
Hello, my name is Parvis Lahayfar and...
Todd, get him a little closer to the microphone, please.
Okay, yes. Oh, I see, that's right, thank you. My name is Parvis Lahayfar and I'm the part owner and developer of the project located on, at Shaw and Polk.
Parvis, get a little bit closer to that microphone. Thank you.
Southwest corner of Shaw and Polk. And this is regarding a signal light in southwest corner of Shaw and Polk, which was a few years ago, city installed this signal light a few years ago on the corner of Shaw and Polk. But unfortunately, they put that and installed in the wrong place. Now that we are under construction, they want us to move and correct the mistake they made and move the, back to the place that it's supposed to be. And that, of course, is going to cost us money and also we don't have any budget, is put aside for this cost. And also, it's going to be a hardship on this project, a financial hardship on this project. And it is a hardship on this project because, believe it or not, the city put so much, loaded us with a lot of expenses and a lot of costs on this project. I'll give you example, on the Lola side, they told us that we're going to be temporary coverage on, with asphalt, but they came back and they said you have to put permanent road on the Lola side. Then also, storm drainage, there was not any storm drainage, so they want us, we, first we were going to put underground piping for storm drainage, they came back and said you cannot do that. So we had to lease the, another land and pipe it from our side to the storm drainage, which is a pounding base, and we create, that's going to be additional hundred fifty thousand on top of the expenses. So all these expenses, we are loaded with, this is no, cost no budget for moving the traffic light, which is the error made by city at that time. And I have here the map and drawing here that shows that instead of going with the drawing of a standard drawing of the city, they made the mistake and they put the ITS box and also the signal light in the wrong place. And on top of it, they are taking the land from our land as an easement for the sidewalk because of the error. If they didn't make that error, we didn't have to give up some land, you know, as an easement for the sidewalk. And we are not compensated, compensated for that neither, but we paid for the land ourselves anyway. So all these costs and all these things is going to create a lot of problem for us. That's why I'm here to, hopefully, we can solve this problem. And if you see here, this is a correct drawing of the city that they were supposed to locate the signal light and all the vault and also ITS box of traffic communication. But here, if you have, show it here on the, blow it up and you can see if you want, I can show that here, the signal light is located in the wheelchair ramp. Wheelchair ramp, which is wrong, we have to move it four feet south along with the Polk Avenue. Move that one. Also moving the ITS towards another four feet here are these boxes and vault. So all this is going to cost money and, you know, financially, the error that the city made and they want us to correct. Now, if the city come by, say, oh, we pay you later, but the problem is we hire people to do the job, you have to pay them right away and they don't accept pay later. So that's why it's causing this budget problem, hardship on our project and that's why we are here.
All right. Hey, Parvis, thank you. So Councilman Jean, that is in District One. So are you familiar, had you heard about this before?
Yes, I have. And actually, although the projects preceded me prior to getting involved, I, I think I was involved probably halfway through when a lot of the issues came up. And I actually met with the partners several times, met with staff, so I've got Scott's here. And, and we thought that there was a, a solution that was in place, but, you know, I guess the partners, the, it's not satisfied with the particular solution. I, I've thought that we've looked at all the options that the city can do. I'll ask that, you know, for, for them to go back and work with Scott, see what it is. But I think staff has done a yeoman's work in trying to amend and make some of the changes that, that's available. So I, this is a presentation, as I've told the group, you know, this is a presentation, the council's not going to make any decision up here on this particular issue. And so I, I think what's going to happen is that I'll get them back, sit down with Scott, but it's probably going to come back next year at some point because I don't see this coming through if, if the solution is not satisfactory to the parties. Okay?
Hey, thank you, Parvis. We appreciate it. Yep. Thank, thank you for letting us know about it. I'm going to call up Scott Moser, our public, from our Public Works Department, so if you'll have a seat, we appreciate it.
Sure, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
What's, what's the story, Scott?
Good afternoon, council. Scott Moser, Public Works. So, a little bit of background, this is the intersection of Polk and Shaw. Great development project proposal at the southwest corner for a car wash. It's been challenging to work through a lot of issues. The nearest flood control basin's about, over a mile away, trying to work through drainage issues and how to help that project go. And again, this is not, this is not one of your large subdivisions or really large commercial developments, and there's a lot of infrastructure still needed in that area. The traffic signal situation is one where the council may recall, we undertook a capital project to improve the intersection, and we did not build the ultimate intersection improvement there. We were dealing with budget challenges and how much we could do. All told, the city invested about three-quarter million into the intersection, widened Shaw, relocated signal poles. The, the total intersection improvement is, is probably closer to two, two and a half million, and we, we simply weren't able, citywide, to put that much money into the project. So, what we're left with at the southwest corner, where the, the car wash development's proposed, there's about a $70,000 cost estimated to do the signal work to get that to the ultimate location. Right now, it's at a temporary location. It works, but it doesn't work with the project going in. So, that's about 70,000 worth of work. We've determined it's all reimbursable through the fee program, 100% reimbursable. And the developer would not have to pay any signal fees going in because they'd be doing this work. However, last piece of information is, you know, I wish, I wish we were in the situation that 70,000 worth of work, we could immediately reimburse and repay. We have a current reimbursement list of other developers. We have 16 other developers who've done their work, they're standing in line for reimbursement in the fee program. All told, that's two and a half million dollars waiting for reimbursements just in the traffic signal program. Development with a slower pace, fee revenue's been down, developers are still building, installing traffic signals, and then standing in line. So, that's, that's the challenge. The option would be for the developer to go in, do the work, standard practice, citywide, then they submit for reimbursement, stand in line as soon as we get that fee revenue in, clear, added to the list, clear them off, they'd be paid. That, that could be a number of years. Short of that, the only other option would be for the city to basically devote non-impact fee revenue to, to put in, further add dollars into the Polk and Shaw project to do that type of work. And that would be at the expense of, of something else throughout the city.
Scott?
Hope that's helpful. If there are any questions, we're glad to respond.
The screen's clear, so I think we're good on questions. All right. Councilman John, maybe you and I can talk after offline. Parvis, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it. All right. Now, we are on to the four o'clock timed item. It's a hearing to consider a plan amendment application, a rezone application, and related environmental assessments for a property located on the east side of Locan and Dakota. And...
Good afternoon, Council President Brandell, members of the City Council, Nathan Bouvet, Development Resource Management Department. I bring before you tonight Plan Amendment Application A 13-9, Rezone Application R 13-16, and the associated environmental finding for the environmental assessment. These applications were filed by Dirk Pushel of Land Development Services, Inc., on behalf of John Bonadelli. In order to facilitate approval, vesting tenant of track map 6067 to subdivide the subject property into a 98-lot, single-family residential development, including the installation of related public facilities and infrastructure. The proposed project also involves an annexation into the city of Fresno, subject to the standards of annexation that can be found within your staff report. Please note, the subject property does fall within the parameter of the Southeast Growth Area, or SEGA. While initial planning studies commenced within the vast area, it has since been incorporated to the Fresno General Plan update and has been renamed the Southeast Development Area, or SEDA. However, this has not been approved or finalized and is referenced for informational purposes only. The project is approximately 24.71 acres of property located on the east side of North Locan Avenue, between the East Dakota alignment to the north and East Shields Avenue to the south. The property highlighted in red, illustrate, or excuse me, highlighted red will be pre-zoned, amended, and annexed into the city of Fresno, along with the applicant's property. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the subject site is surrounded by a variety of residential and agricultural uses. The subject site hasn't been developed, nor has it been cultivated since 2005, when it was an almond orchard. The following photographs illustrate the view looking east from the northwest corner of the property, a view looking southeast from the northeast corner of the property, and lastly, a view looking east from the southwest corner of the property. Plan Amendment Application A 13-09 is a request to amend the land use from the agricultural designation in the county of Fresno to the medium-low-density residential planned land use designation in the city of Fresno, which will amend the 2025 Fresno General Plan. The subject site is surrounded by a variety of agricultural county designations, as well as medium and medium-low-density residential, office, parks, and school designations within the city of Fresno. Rezone Application R 13-09 is a request to pre-zone the subject site from the AE 20 to the R1 Zone District. The proposed R1 Zone District is consistent with the proposed medium-low-density planned land use. The subject site is surrounded by county designations of AE 20 or exclusive 20-acre agricultural, as well as city designations of R1 or single-family, and R2 or low-density multiple-family designations. Conditions of zoning are attached to the proposed rezone. The following are some examples, but not all-inclusive. One, the applicant is to enter into a standard subdivision agreement. The applicant is to comply with all project-specific mitigation measures that can be found within your staff report. The project is contingent upon the track map and the annexation being approved by LAFCO. A side letter agreement with respect to the restated memorandum of understanding between the applicant, city, and county be completed. And lastly, the project be contingent upon LAFCO again approving the annexation. As proposed and to be reviewed at a, at a later date, track 6067 in its conceptual state provides the following: 98 single-family lots that are 6,100 square feet and larger. Again, these are all subject to modification. It's going to include outlots for public open space, as well as the installation of related public facilities and infrastructure improvements, including curb and gutter, streets, water and sewer, drainage, sidewalks, streetlights, landscaping, and so on. Based on the environmental assessment and project-specific mitigation measures, staff has determined that although the project could have a significant effect on the environment, there will not be a significant effect in this case because revisions in the project have been made and agreed to by the project opponent that would avoid or mitigate the effects to a point where clearly no significant effects on the environment will occur, and there is no substantial evidence that the project, as revised, may have a significant effect on the environment. On October 13th, 2014, the Council District Four Plan Implementation Committee made a formal recommendation to approve the project by a vote of three to zero. On October 15th, the Planning Commission also made a recommendation to the City Council to approve the Plan Amendment, Rezone, and the associated environmental assessment by, by a vote of seven to zero. During the October 15th Planning Commission meeting, general comments were as follows: The future 2035 general plan and, and effects it will have on the proposed annexation and pre-zone; the concern related to two-story houses being developed on properties adjacent to, or excuse me, abutting previously developed areas; concern related to water supply; and lastly, concern with the potential loss of areas of rural land in the immediate area. First to respond, I'd like to point out that this is not a growth-inducing project. It's already in place for the proposed development. This will only be the, this will be the only development in the SEGA area. No other developments will be considered until the terms of the MOU are met. Second, the applicant is met and is willing to work with all your residents that are in close proximity to the development. So, upon submission of their development plans, they're willing to take that into account, the two-story homes being, say, for example, single-story homes to accommodate the residents. But they have been in contact with them, and I think that they could respond in further detail when they give their presentation next. As far as the water supply issue, if you refer to pages nine through 11 of the City Council staff report, it discusses, and staff has determined that with the implementation of the project-specific mitigation measures developed for the proposed project, the project will not result in any significant impacts to hydrology and water quality. Various departments and agencies also concurred with that point. And lastly, to reiterate, existing R1 and R2 developments completely surround the proposed site. The project meets both the zoning and planned land use density requirements for the area. And during the developmental approval of the site and homes being proposed, the applicant again has indicated his willingness to work with area residents. Staff supports the project because it is found to be consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2025 general plan. It's suitable for the type and density of development. It's safe from potential cause or introduction of serious public health problems, and it does not conflict with public interest in the subject site or adjacent lands. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the environmental finding of mitigated negative declaration, also adopt a resolution approving the Plan Amendment Application, and lastly, adopt the bill amending the official zone map that reclassifies the subject site from AE 20 to R1 CZ Zone District. That concludes staff's comments. Staff is available for questions. Again, the applicant and property owner are in attendance tonight, and they have presented a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. All right. We're going to go out to the public, and the only person to turn in a card is Mike Schwan, so we're going to take you first, Mike, but then anybody else can also speak. So, you're on deck.
Thank you for, very much for having me be here. I'm one of the owners that's next to this development. We have, we spent some time talking to the other residents of the, of this development. I don't think anybody's in favor of it. It's, it's, you know, we're all on larger areas, and, but we, not, not one of us think that it's going to change the, the decision of, of what's going forward. But there are a couple of issues that I want to bring up. If you wouldn't mind going back to that one slide, the prior to the Planning Commission slide. I do want to say, we had a meeting last night at, that we hosted at our house, and Paul was there, and I appreciate him being there. We had the representative from our county supervisor there. We had LAFCO there, and Mr. Bonadelli. And it was a very good meeting. I appreciate Mr. Bonadelli for being there, and he explained a lot of this to us. I mean, it doesn't change us as far as having the, having this development right in our backyard, surrounded by all of us residents. But anyway, I appreciate everybody being there last night. So, that one slide that, before the Planning Commission, there was another, the three to nothing vote.
This slide? Is this the one you want to look at?
No.
Okay.
There was a slide that was on a three to nothing vote.
That one?
Plan and Implementation Committee. Yeah, is this, is this the one, the neighborhood committee one?
Yes.
Because I'm, I'm kind of, I'm learning as I go in this because of what's happening. Why wasn't any resident even contacted in this? Not one resident even was contacted to ask them their, about the development. That, I'd like to know, number one, what that report said, if that's possible. Is that a public document? I'd like to know what it said and why no residents got contacted. Number two, the, the county doesn't say they can do much for me because the sphere of influence is city of Fresno. I've got one major issue should this go through, and that is, there's a, on that map, if you wouldn't mind putting that map back up of the, of the whole area, there's a canal that this is going to be boarding, bordering. And right now, we've, we, in the, in the last few years, we've had all these developments go in across the street from us, you know, 300 houses or so. Road improvements have been made on the south side of the development and on the north side of development from, from the Clovis side. We have a widening of the road on both sides, coming to a, a canal with a bridge on it that is barely wide enough for two cars. If you're walking your dog, or people are all doing walks, they got to now walk on, on that, that canal bridge as well, besides the cars that are coming down. I am, as a citizen, asking, because I'm not getting any answers of how this is going to get done, somebody's going to get killed on this bridge, and I think it should be done before this development happens, not after we add 100 more houses in there. I don't know why it hasn't been done as of yet, but as Mr. Bonadelli explained to us last night, it has to do with developer fees, and that's how it pays for bridges. I don't want to wait for another 100 houses before this bridge gets done because somebody is going to get killed on it. I guarantee it. And the same thing, we have a, we have a bridge on, on DeWolf, same exact situation that is in a dangerous situation right now, too. So, if the city has sphere of influence on it, I ask you to have your influence on it and not wait until something happens.
Right on, Mike. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, on your first item, the Implementation Committee thing, I don't know how District Four's is, but I don't think District Two, the one I, I have, has extensive notes, like I don't think there'll be a report there. But maybe Councilmember Caprioli will can check in at least for you.
We can do that, but I don't think it's a recorded process. It's the applicant making a effort to advise them of what he wants, how he wants it, where he wants it, and then they ask questions. And there are, there are five people on the Implementation Committee. They're from all areas of District Four. We like diversity, and everyone has their input. And then from there, as you know, it goes to the Planning Committee. And then from there, and I assume you got your notice, because there's notice sent out, and I, I know Mr. Bonadelli's pretty dependable about having meetings, and like the one we had last night. Thank you for hosting that.
You're welcome.
So, there's a whole process involved there. So, that's, that's kind of the overview of how it works, but I don't think there's an official record, as we have here today, for instance.
Now, like the notice with the Planning Commission, when it went out, it did not include us in that notice. Now, I'm, I'm 50 yards away from the, the edge of that, and why we, and, and my neighbor, which does border it, was, you know, a lot of us did not get notified at the Planning Commission. It was only the people that were going to be affected in the, in the annexation that, that got notices. If we hadn't had a, a meeting that they included us in, we wouldn't have gotten notified of that. But this one, we did get a notification on, but the Planning Commission one, we did not. So, I, there's another, there's a, something wrong there that I would like to see fixed, if possible, so that there, there's better, a greater representation of the residents.
Cool. Yeah, we can look into that for sure. That makes sense, too. In other words, you would have liked to have been noticed on the earlier part of the process.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, I'll look into that. We'll look into that.
We can do that.
That's the whole process of the, of the Planning Commission and so forth. So, thanks, Mike.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for hosting again last night.
All right. John, or anybody else that wants to make a public comment? Dirk, now's your chance.
Good evening. John Bonadelli, 7030 North Fruit. We agree with the staff's recommendation of approval. We agree with the neighborhood implementation unanimous approval, and we agree with the Planning Commission's unanimous approval of, of the project. As you know, 10 years ago, developers, home builders were told, hey, let's stop growing north, let's, let's go south, and let's go to this southeast area. So, we try to be, you know, good develop, good home builders, and we take out the maps that are provided to us, and they tell us in little different colors where to build. Ed Cashin builds in the commercial, Spencer builds apartments, we build residential. So, we followed the, the SEGA map and bought this land, and several hundred acres out there, along with Close Unified, along with Granville, along with Wath and Costanos, and several other home builders or developers I can't even think of. But, you know, SEGA, things happened over the years, and, and it got rolled into the general plan update. Okay. Things happen. We still own a lot of land out there, but that's okay. Now, this particular property, though, Nathan, can you, can you put up there the aerial photograph? Now, this particular property, though, Nathan, can you, can you put up there the aerial?
Google Earth.
This particular property is unique, and it's unique for, for several reasons. Number one, it's contiguous to city services on Locan. I built all the homes across the street, three or 400 of them, and they're a higher-density product. I built Locan Avenue north of Shields, widened it for the traffic, put in the sewer and water, storm drain lines. All, all the services are in Locan. So the city limit is right there contiguous to this particular property. And you can tell by this aerial photo that this particular property is surrounded by existing development. There are million-dollar homes to the east, you can see those large parcels with big pools and all that, and they're terrific homes. There's some larger parcels to the south, larger parcels to the north, and then there's our higher-density neighborhood that we built to the west. So when, when we looked at this particular property, because it's not that large, it's only 20 acres, its size, or its location situation, and, and it being contiguous to city services and surrounded by development, to us, it made sense for this project to go forward. So when I came up with the design, I thought, well, look, I don't want to do the high-density design that we did to the, to the west, because I wanted to blend it with the larger parcels to the north, south, and, and east. So we came up with a product type, a lot size that's, you know, almost 7,000 square foot, and, and we came up with a product type that we intend to build that is going to be all the way up to four, almost 4,000 square feet. It's a larger product, it's a little bit higher end, it'll be priced probably from the low 200s all the way up to half a million. And it's going to be, you know, I, I should, met with, I can't tell you how many meetings I've been to, probably two dozen meetings. I've tried to meet with every single neighbor that will call me up or respond to our, our letters, and, and that's fine. I, I don't mind doing that, that, we're just trying to be good neighbors. And we've made a lot of concessions trying to, we've manipulated the road's design, we, we manipulated some product to try to address everybody's concerns. And I think we did a decent job because, you know, there's fortunately not a lot of people, or not very many people here saying, oh, it's a really bad project. In fact, hopefully, there's nobody here. But even Mike liked some of the things we were talking about. But we've put a lot of effort into this project in trying to design something that makes sense and that everybody here will be proud of, including myself decades from now. We also have letters of support from several neighbors, you know, due to some of our efforts, which are included in your packet. So, anyway, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and if you would allow me the opportunity to come back up in case there's questions or concerns, I would love that opportunity.
Definitely, we will, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I'm Dirk Pushel, and my business address is 923 Van S here in Fresno, and here this afternoon on behalf of John Bonadelli and Bonadelli Homes. I have a brief presentation. I think you've heard some excellent testimony about the unique nature of this project. I'm not going to go into those characteristics again, but only to provide some contrast. As John has mentioned, the density is only 4.12 units per acre. That's a very low density. If you look at your general plan goals, John selected that density to make the project more compatible with surrounding properties. The 98 proposed lots, in comparison to the lots that were developed in Fresno and Clovis in 2013, there were 1,314 lots. So if you compare the number of lots that the Bonadelli Homes is bringing onto the market, that's also de minimis. Your staff report is very comprehensive in its evaluation of water, sewer, gas, electricity, also the condition of North Locan Road. I might add that they were all installed by Mr. Bonadelli, so the, the issue of whether or not there's adequate public services has been clearly resolved. Your staff has prepared a comprehensive environmental assessment specific to this project. They developed mitigation measures and project conditions, again, specific to this project, and all of the potential impacts that were associated with the project were deemed to be insignificant. With respect to some of the findings that are required in your general plan and MOU, this project is not under Williamson Act. It has not been farmed since 2005. And also to give you a little bit more of a technical component of what the soils are really like, they're Class IV soils. 68% of the soils are considered poor on the subject site, not really productive soils by, by nationwide standards. We hired Valerie Thompson, who has a PhD in chemical engineering from Purdue, to do a comprehensive environmental assessment of, of air impacts. Her conclusion, based on that study, was that there were no adverse impacts, there were no hotspots. In fact, the January 2013 report is consistent with the January 3, 2014 letter from the Unified Air District that also concludes that this project will not have an impact on air quality, and that we've also submitted our project air district assessment that has been approved by the air district, concluding that those, again, another layer of review, that those impacts are insignificant. We hired TJ KM, who is a nationwide traffic consulting firm. The mitigation measures and conditions associated with that traffic study have been incorporated into the staff report. We went before the Fresno County Board of Supervisors on April 22 of 2014 and received a unanimous support and had a very, I think, very direct conversation with the board about our, our next steps, and ultimately to annex the property. And we were wished the best of luck by former Councilmember Borges, who remembered the project working its way through City Hall some time ago. We are consistent with your general plan, we're consistent with the proposed general plan through SADA, and we do not believe that the project would thwart any of your infill, infill goals as they are suggestive. In other words, to encourage and promote infill, not inconsistent with the, with the findings of your staff that, that the, the general plan allows this project. In closing, we know that there's another step, and that is to go to LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. They have their own requirements. We anticipate that the same general conclusions about the unique nature of this project will be made by the LAFCO board, and we look forward to, to going through that process. In summary, this is a unique property due to its size, its location, and the improvements that are immediately adjacent to it. We support the staff recommendation and the recommendation of your advisory committee, your planning commission, and of your staff, and agree with all of the conditions that are proposed. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them of me.
Thank you, Dirk.
Thank you.
And we'll call you back up if we have some questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item, this issue? All right, then, I've seen none, I'm going to come back up, and this is in Council District Four, Councilman Capriolio's district, so.
Thank you. I think Mr. Sanchez needs to address a little issue.
Yes, thank you. Council President Brandell, Commissioner Capriol, Councilmember Capriolio. I just, staff would like to amend the resolution that is before you, that is the approval of the plan amendment, and staff would simply like to add paragraph four to read as follows. That is that the council finds that the proposed project, for the reasons cited in the record, shall be the only entitled development within the Sega planning area, and that any future request within the Sega planning area shall not be considered until such time that all requirements of the city of Fresno and county of Fresno memorandum of understanding are complied with.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say to Mike and the other residents of the area, life is not black or white. It's not that you don't have any say-so in this process, and if you do or you don't, and that's, it doesn't work that way. Your participation is critical and important, as is all the citizens of the city of Fresno and the county as well. And by virtue of you getting involved like that, that's how these mitigation efforts come out. And that makes the product better and better and better to service everyone involved with it and our, our community as a whole. So thank you for being involved, appreciate that, and you do have a voice, and you do have an impact, and you are important to this. So I want you to really understand that, and I appreciate the efforts you've made. I wish I had a, a solution for widening that bridge, or the two bridges we talked about last night. And I, I don't know, I haven't been able to figure that out, how we can, how we can do that effectively, and it is a danger, and we recognize that, and we hope to mitigate that some way. So by coming forward, this is a better product, and the Bonadelli Company is always willing to work with the people they are involved with, as you saw through the meetings and all. So as a result, I think we've got the best product available, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt and approve the recommendation of city staff.
I'll second that. All right, then, do we have a clear screen? Anybody else? All right. We have a motion and a second by Councilman Baines. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
I need it.
He was an aye. Okay. Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations to Bonadelli Company. Yvonne, am I clear now? Are we done? Okay. Council's going to take a 15-minute break and, and resume our meeting at 5:15. And that is ID number 14-561 on the agenda. It's to receive a report of findings and summary of discussions from the Recharge Fresno Community Forums and direct city staff to initiate the Proposition 218 hearing process for proposed changes to the schedule of rates, fees, and charges for public water service and setting the public hearing for February 5, 2015 at 5:00 PM. And that's from our Department of Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. We're here today to present the staff report recommendations for the Water Division capital and rate plans. And so with that, I'll start with the presentation. What we want to talk to you today is about the council direction, just to give you a sense of the mission we've been on since July 31st, talk about the water supply challenges and opportunities that we have, we're trying to address, a little bit about the public participatory process, what we did as a result of the council direction, talk a little bit about the objectives, the considerations, and our recommendations for the capital and the rate plans, offer some closing comments, and then we'll, we'll close it out and take questions if, if there are any available. All right, so the council direction, this is the mission we were on as of July 31st, actually August 1st. We wanted to conduct the public participation process, and we wanted to look at identifying ways to reduce the rates. And there were two strategies that were identified for us to consider. One is, can we look at reevaluating the size of the surface water treatment facility? And the other one was, could we evaluate the size and timing of other capital projects that are out there that were part of the original plan? We were also asked to look at alternative financing strategies. What's the optimum combination of cash, state low-interest loans, and bonded debt to pay for this program? Look at alternative rate designs as well, and so the rate designs were, you know, a uniform rate for everybody, a uniform rate by different classes. That's the system we have right now. Right now, we have a uniform rate by different classes, customers, residential pays 61 cents a hundred cubic feet, non-residential pays 70, .745. So that's the system we have now. And we also looked at tiered rates as an option. And the other direction we were given was to develop a five-year rate plan. The old rate plan was four years, and we were asked to look at a, a five-year rate plan to spread out the, the rate increase. So a little bit about the water supply challenges and the infrastructure challenges. So we've talked about it a great deal, but worth repeating. Groundwater overdrafting is an issue here in the city and throughout the valley. USGS was at one of our meetings, and they sent their individual, and he reported that in the Teleri Basin, which is where we are. We are the number one city, largest city in that basin. We lose about 1.5, the equivalent of 1.5 Pine Flat Dams every year right now under current, and that's a million and a half acre-feet of water. Groundwater contamination has historically been an issue. There's new contaminations and contaminants have been identified, so we're looking to work through that. Aging infrastructure, we do have some old systems and old pipes, and so things wear out, they deteriorate, they get old, and we want to get ahead of the curve to kind of get, so that we don't have, run these things to failure and have catastrophic fails throughout the city. And then the drought we're in now is just part of how it is. I mean, there are going to be droughts in the future as well, and so is there, as part of this, can we do a strategy and a water resources management plan that helps us navigate through these a little bit better and differently in the future? It's a little bit different this time since the last time, on July 31st, when you guys rescinded the rates, two months later, the, well, six weeks later, the governor signed the law Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. So that's a different situation than we were here in Aug, on July 31st. And the state has put out their, kind of their general timeline for addressing this TCP contamination. It's, again, it's a historic land use practice issue we have here. We have it at about 80 wells, be about $170 to $300 million to, to address that current condition. So let's talk about what the plan is. It really focuses around the idea of using our surface water allocations out of the, out of the, out of the mountains, the mountain water, we'll call it. We have 180,000 feet in a normal year. This year, and it's official now, we heard this at the Clovis meeting on Friday, this is officially the driest year on record, as long as records have been kept in terms of precipitation. And even in this condition, we still would add 65,000 acre-feet available to us out of the mountains, and that would have been met half of our demand. We're going to probably, we've been at 140 this year with the stage-two conservation, we'll probably end it in about 100 and, about 130,000 acre-feet. We currently use 20,000 at the surface water treatment plant in the northeast, and we intentionally recharge about 50 in cooperation with our partners, Fresno Irrigation District and the Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District. And so we have a balance of about 110,000. And so the plan is, the strategy we propose to give to the state as part of this Groundwater Sustainability Act is really shown on that curve there. The red line is kind of what we've been doing historically over the last 80 years. You've seen the chart, we continue to draw down the aquifer. Our plan would be to add additional surface water treatment capacity, pull water out of the mountains, replace the groundwater with that surface water, and, and create this recovery charge, or what we call sustainability curve that we want to achieve. And that's really what the law talks about, is achieving a sustainable yield, not taking out more than sustainable yield in the, in the aquifer. And so that would be the basis of what we would present to the state in terms of our plan to, to comply with that law. The public participatory process, want to talk a little bit about that. It was a, we had four forums. We advertised them about, just about every way I think we could, social media, website, television, print media, radio. We got it out there everywhere we could, our website, Facebook pages, and we publicized it out. We had about 140 people attend each of the four, plus or minus, but about 140 average attended each of those all around the city. We made it extra convenient so that if you couldn't attend the meeting, it was broadcast live, so people could actually watch it on TV if they couldn't get out to the site. And if the time wasn't convenient for you, we recorded it, so that you could also then watch the proceedings separate at a different time that was more convenient for you. So we made all that available. We had a water rate financing summit where we talked a little more detail about how to pay for these facilities. We established a rechargefresno.com website where all this information can be assembled, and people could go look for it. And then we had a Fresno Recharge Hotline, a number that people could call to add questions, and we're getting calls in that phone call, in that phone system now, just talking about today's meeting and what's next and things going on. But we got a lot of comments through a lot of different places, and so that process has been ongoing, and we, the comments and letters and stuff are coming in today, and so we're still compiling them and putting them together. And one of the things we really wanted to focus on was, you know, and I think the bee captured it for us, this was our goal, you know, the city found a way to make the people's voice the center of the attention, and that was really what we wanted to do. Get out in the community, talk with them, meet with them, listen to their thoughts and ideas, and, and make the information available and get input back from them. So let's talk a little bit about the objectives, you know, what the considerations were and how we kind of structured the recommendations. So the, the objective of the recommendations is on this slide. Here's what we were really trying to accomplish. First thing is, the top-of-the-list item is the top-list item, and that is, we need to comply with laws and regulations. It's just what we need to do as a, as a utility providing ser, you know, you realize, this service we're providing is public health and safety. We're delivering water to people's homes, children, elderly, the hospitals, it's got to comply with regulations. We have a water quantity law that's out there that's now in effect. We had a water, we have a water quality law that's into effect, and then when have a water quality law that's into effect, and then when you design rates and fees, there's a, the California Constitution has, has some information, it has some direction on how you do that, how you design rates and fees for water and sewer utility. Second item there is to implement surface water treatment, it's been on the books in the city of Fresno for about twenty-five years, this is something that's been talked about a great deal. I was corrected at the last forum, which was November tenth, previous Monday, and that indicated that, that actually the idea of bringing water out of the mountains into the city has been on the books for fifty years. So it's something we've known about, it's an idea that's been out there, and so we've been looking to implement that. I think it was the last Thursday, Councilman Brand and Councilman Capriolio brought their Water Conservation Act together, a lot of good policy ideas and directions and guidance and things we need to start doing, and so water conservation is a big part of what we need to do going forward. The less water that we pull out and have to deliver to homes, it's less we pull out of the mountains, it's less we pull out of the ground, so conservation will be part of the program moving forward. Talked about it earlier, the rehabilitation replacement of existing infrastructure, things get old, they age, they wear, and we got to get ahead of the curve to try and stem that tide before we just have catastrophic failures everywhere. And the cost of getting the repairs will be more costly than just actually building it new. And recharge will continue to be a part of the program, we currently do recharge now with our partners FID and Fresno Metropolitan Flood Control District, that'll continue to be part of the program. We can, the combination of stopping or throttling back the groundwater pumping, and then throwing water on top of it in the strategic areas where we need it to be, to get the groundwater to recover, is just something that has to be part of our plan, and it continues to be part of our plan moving forward. So one of the things we was asked to look at was the surface water treatment plant, and so here are the different things that were looked at, that we've looked at, trying to address, you know, what are the different combinations of things we could do? So right now, the recommendation is based on a fifty-four M G D wastewater plant, and then we will take advantage of rules that exist in the state regulations to allow us to rerate that to eighty M G D. Other idea we looked at was why don't we just build a sixty at southeast, and then we'll look at a future twenty M G D expansion, again, the time delay of just pushing that stuff off cost, and so that's a two hundred and seven million dollar program. We looked at thirty M G D northeast surface water treatment plant expansion, and then maybe coming, and then doing the forty, fifty at southeast, it's about two hundred and thirteen million for that. And there's been a lot of talk about why don't you just do the whole thing recharge, and then just go ahead and spend the money to, you know, to treat the wellheads at the, at the source for the TCP contamination, and that's probably about six hundred and seventy million. That's assuming you could find suitable land in the area that would, that we could recharge in. You know, to make the recharge work, a lot of, a lot of things got to come in your favor, you got to find available land, you got to find suitable soils that percolate well, you got to find in close proximity to where Fresno Irrigation has their, has their, has their facilities. And so those are the kinds of things that we have to look at and just try and make that available. So here's the recommended major projects that we're looking at, it's really three types of projects, raw water supply is the first element of this project, so a Friant Kern Pipeline that will bring water to the northeast surface water treatment plant, and then the Kings River Pipeline that will bring river, water off the Kings River into the southeast surface water treatment plant. The next major element is the eighty M G D, it's fifty-four M G D that will be re-rated to eighty, southeast surface water treatment plant. And then after we get that done, we need to put the finished water pipes in so that once it's out of the plant, then we can get it out as far and as deep into the distribution system as we can, so that we can start throttling back and turning off some wells, so that can recover, and then we can buy her some, some time if we have to do something with this contamination. You know, just to give you a sense of the numbers, so right now, we are currently overdraft the aquifer about forty thousand acre feet a year, we're pulling that much out more than we put it back in, that's about the equivalent of forty M G D. You know, we have wells right now that are at the near, because the groundwater level has fallen so far, we have twenty-six wells that are about thirty M G D, they're just at the end, and if it keeps falling, those wells will be taken out of service, that's about thirty M G D there. And on the TCP side with the contamination, if the state establishes the regulation where they've kind of been telegraphing, they'll establish it, we'll probably lose about another eighty M G D of capacity there that we'll have to take offline and figure out another solution other than treating or turn them off or abandon them. So here was the original program. It was four hundred and nine million dollars, this is the one that we decided to take a second look at in July. And if we wanted to go ahead and say, well, let's just kind of revisit that program and just kind of put it back into place, it's probably, and it wanted to do a five-year program, again, this was a four-year plan, make it a five-year plan, it would be about four hundred and forty-two million dollars, eight million of that is just the cost of just delaying the project, you know, construction cost escalation runs about three to, two and a half to three percent, like clockwork, it just, it just does. And so that would, that fifteen month delay is about eight point six. The additional year of rehab and replacement work that was in the existing program and in the proposed program adds another twenty-four, so we're at about four hundred and forty-two million dollars for the original program. The cost escalation, I do want to just kind of clarify that, you know, the northeast surface water treatment plant is thirty M G D, if we would have did it, built that back when we originally had kind of came to light, what I would say twenty-five years ago, it probably would have been built for about a dollar a gallon. We wound up bidding it in two thousand, and then actually putting it online in two thousand and four, that thing went through two different bidding processes, and they got value engineered down to, down to, down to some, this current facility, be about a dollar fifty a gallon, and if we built it today, be two, about two dollars and sixty cents a gallon. So we can, we can continue to think if there's another way to do it, but every time we push that back, it's just going to add dollars to the, to the cost of, cost of waiting. So what we're talking about doing now is a four hundred and twenty-nine million dollar program, and here's how it breaks out and compares against the old program. The intentional recharge, we adjusted that a little bit, again, we've been having discussions with FID and FMFCD, and so, and there is the partner with them aggressively, we met with Clovis on Tuesday night, you know, they want to be a partner with us as well, and we want to partner with them on the, on the recharge facilities. The raw water supply is where we, we had to make significant adjustments. The Friant Kern Pipeline was originally planned to be built several, several years ago, ran into some environmental issues, when you run these water lines through environmental habitats, it requires the assessments and the mitigation planning and, and the field investigations, and it just pushed that project to the point where we're going to now make it part of this program, so that's about twenty-three million dollars for the Friant Kern Pipeline. On the Kings River Pipeline, that was originally anticipated, we went into the E I S process with that, like two alternatives, a pipeline and a, using the FID canals, and we originally intended to use the canals, after we contacted the state, the state sent a letter to us saying, you know, that's the idea of using the canal in the interest of public health and safety, you know, trying to make sure that what we put into that plant doesn't impact what goes out to the distribution system. Their recommendation and guidance was to go ahead and use an enclosed pipe, single purpose, just dedicated to the water plant. So that moved that raw water to ninety-eight million. Surface water treatment plant, we did, we did downrate and fifty-four M G D that will rerate this eighty. Finished water distribution, this is really key, so we wound up actually adding some money to this, because we, it's really important, if we got the water to the plant, and we treated the water to the plant, but we couldn't get it out to the distribution system, our challenge would be we couldn't turn off any pumps, I mean, that's really what our goal is, to get the water out into the distribution system to replace the groundwater, and so we would, we added some money in there to make sure we get it as far and as deep as we can into the distribution system. So the recommended program, the mayor's recommended program is four hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, where we really wound up having to, to do some, some soul searching and some cutting on the program to get it to that was the rehab and replacement and upgrade project. So that is the investment in our existing assets, the idea that we were going to make that work, we had to go ahead and, and make those adjustments. So the question is, how do the rates compare? That middle bar, you can see the new plan total and the original plan total, so the direction we had given, we were given from staff, I mean, excuse me, from council, was to go out and see if you can make adjustments to the capital program, adjustment to the financial plan, that you could come back with rates that were lower than the original rates, and that's what we did. And so you can see the yellow band is what the original rates were, the blue band above is what the new rates are, and so we're trending less in every year, in all the years, and then where we really catch up is back out in Feb, in the fifth years, where we're at, you know, within eight cents of, yeah, about eight cents of each other from the, from the rate. So that was, that was the original intent, to get them lower, and that's what we did. What you'll notice, though, important on this slide, it's really in the bottom, is that, you know, most of the, I'm looking at February, excuse me, FY twenty nineteen, most of the cost on the water bill on that fifty-two dollars and eighteen cents is just to keep the lights on. It's the vehicles, equipment, materials, supplies, electricity, chemical, vehicles, all the things that we do to deliver water to the community twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, whether there's electrical, electrical outlet, outages or anything, we got to get water to the system. And so about thirty-three dollars of that is for just keeping the lights on. The big projects I talked about on the previous slide is about ten dollars of the total fifty-two dollar monthly bill that we're looking at, so that's its actual value in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of the bill and the, and the rate impact to the customer. So our recommendation to, to council is to direct staff to initiate the two eighteen process for the new capital plan and rate plan. We're proposing, we're recommending, excuse me, a uniform rate for all customers, we did look at the tiered rate, but we're just not at a point where we have sufficient data to make a good distribution in terms of the, how those breaks would work on the blocks. We had Clovis in here on Tuesday night, they have a tiered rate system, they have a hundred years of meter data, we don't have a hundred months of meter data, so as soon as we can take the time to collect our data, and so our recommendation, let's wait till that five-year period, we should have sufficient data at that point to make a determination on how do we make a legally defensible and equitable distribution on a, on a tiered rate system. The revenue plan is user charges and new development fees, so part of this recommendation, and we'll work with the mayor's office and the city manager's office to go out and do a developer fee study on capacity fees, anybody who's making a new connection to the system or expanding an existing connection to the system, we want to make sure that those people who are doing those things, adding value to the community certainly, but that they pay their proportional share of the cost for all of the programs that the Water Division does. On the financial plan, we've put together what we believe is a sound and balanced approach that includes a combination of cash, state low interest loans, and the balance is bonded, bonded debt from revenue bonds. So the proposed schedule is as follows, today, we're asking you for authorization to initiate the two eighteen process. On December twenty-second, we will mail the Prop Two Eighteen notifications to property owners and ratepayers, we're going to send that out, we have sent that out to Howard Jarvis Association, they, we've got comments back that they are supportive of the approach we're taking, we still have some details to work out on the envelope and the ballot and those things, but we, we feel good that we've got all that, so we're going to use the next month between now and December twenty-second, just finalize the details on how we get that out. February fifth is when we will have the public hearing, and we will request council action, and if all goes well, March twelfth, twenty fifteen, the new rates will take effect, assuming we get that council, so that's the schedule we're working under. So I think what I wanted to do in the, in the kind of the closing comments was just share the, the community forum process. It's, it's one thing to go ahead and design a community forum process to allow individuals to, and from the community to share with you their ideas, thoughts, and suggestions for, you know, what they want and what they expect out of a public service. And then it's another thing to actually take that information and make adjustments to a program and how we deliver that service. And so, you know, during the, during the forum process, these were the five things that just kept getting repeated, we kept hearing them, and, you know, the citizens made it clear, these are important to us, these are issues, we really need you to kind of look heavy at these and see what you can do with these, because, because we, we're banking on you as a, you know, the public, the city to, to make these things happen. So the importance of landscaping to the beauty of the community and the property values, that was kind of out there, you know, just whatever you need to do, do what you got to do so that we can have the water to, you know, continue to contribute to that, to our community. And so we kind of heard that, and so conservation was still part of that, but we heard that over and over. You took care of that today, this afternoon, a little bit with the return of one-day watering during the winter schedule, so now the winter is this period where, you know, we were, there was a lot of threats from the community that just, or just communication with the community that just, that is not going to be good for the beauty and the property values, and so the data suggested we could make that change, and we could, and we did, and you guys approved that today, so I appreciate that. And as, as much as I like to tell you we're real smart, that was really just something we picked up through the forum process, and so that was good value that we got out of that. Water affordability is important, that was loud and clear and all, every meeting it came up. And so there's two things on the water affordability I want to comment on that we've attempted to do in this program. The first thing is that, you know, we did a five-year rate plan, and what we attempted to do with the, the combination of cash and low interest loan debt and revenue bond debt was to create a system whereby we provided incremental steps in the rates. And so what we, what we've gone further and looked at is, well, what would be the impact to the boundary conditions on that? So we looked at the low water users in the city, and low water users in the city, we have actual data that tells us this, low water users in the city use about, on the average, of about fifteen thousand gallons a month, average in the city. So in the summer, they'll use about twenty thousand gallons, and in the winter, they'll use about eight thousand gallons, average fifteen thousand gallons. And so for them, the rate increase over the five years, over the five years, each annual year, the average change of their water bill on a monthly basis would be, so the first year would be about five dollars, next year would be about six dollars, next year will be six dollars, fourth year will be eight dollars, in the fifth year, it'll be five dollars. So, you know, it was important, we heard you that, you know, we really needed to make these, see if we can do it in a way that makes these small incremental steps, and, and so those are the, the changes in the rates on a monthly basis over time in that period. Now, on the high water users, they use more water, they're going to have a little bit higher change in their, in their water bill. High water users in the city use on the average of twenty-eight thousand gallons a month, and so they use about ten thousand gallons in the winter, and in the summer, they'll use upward of forty to fifty thousand gallons. But, and so their impact on a monthly basis, again, you look at the, the change in their monthly bill from last year to this year on a monthly basis over the average, so they'll look at eleven dollars first year, eleven dollars the second year, nine dollars, thirteen dollars, and nine dollars. Again, even at that level in the high users, their, their, their impact is in that, you know, nine to ten dollar range is what we've been kind of looking at for this. The other thing we heard was a new development in existing users should each pay their fair share. If you use a dollar of service, you pay a dollar. If you use ten dollars of service, pay ten dollars. And so there was a lot of that discussion, and so we've attempted in this process to look at making sure that we built the rates in a way that are consistent with the California Constitution, and made sure that everybody paid their proportional share, so that's how the rate design has been done. The other thing on, on pay, paying their fair share in the water affordability is the idea of, you know, finding a way to help low income and fixed income households in the community. And so within the California Constitution, it's just not possible for us to take ratepayer money and create a fund that would help support low income and fixed income. So what we're going to propose to do is working with the manager's office and the mayor's office, to see if we can find other sources of funds that might be suitable and could help us create a, a fund of some sort that we could then use to provide support for low income and fixed income folks that, that need that help. And that was also part of the Water Conservation Act, was to look forward and make, make that effort to see how we could find that, so that's part of what we're looking at doing. The other one that was out there was why has the city waited so long to address our groundwater quality issues? That one kind of came up the third meeting and the fourth meeting, just why is, why is it taking so long? And so what I've come to conclude is that that has just been great and interesting conversation to have around the table with a bunch of people, very intellectual, maybe a beverage or two, why? But the reality is, we, we just, it's, it's not easy to say why those things didn't happen, happened years ago, different times, different issues, different priorities, it was just different. And I got to believe that, you know, at those times when those people were considering those things, there were just other priorities that needed to be addressed. And so it's, it's just not part of what we need to be talking about now. What we need to be talking about now is that this council is the first council in the history of any city of Fresno council. No council's ever had to deal with a law that was, it's about two months old now, that says what you've been doing the last one hundred and thirty years to quench your thirst, you can't do that no more. You got to do it different, you just got to find some way to change it. No other council has ever had to face that question, and that's the question that, that this council has to answer, respond to in, in result of the, of the new law that's out there. And so, but fortunately, we have a solution, we would go out and get, bring the water out of the mountains into the, into the valley, make it available to our, to our users, and then they would be able to let our groundwater recharge, recover, restore, and improve the situation we have in our groundwater condition. And that brings me to the last one, you know, this water program will change the city, we heard a lot of that during the meeting, there was just, this, this thing's just going to change the city. And so I, I did some history, just some research, just Fresno, just how it came about, you know, and in, in late eighteen hundreds, Leland Stanford went out and was trying to find a place to put a station on the railroad that connected San Francisco to L.A., and during his side investigations, he, he came across two thousand acres of a beautiful wheat field. And as part of his investigation, he saw, the thing that fascinated him most was that they had created a system of canals to bring mountain water out of the Kings River, onto the valley floor to create this cool thing, this two thousand acres of wheat field. And here we are now, the discussion is bring water out of the mountain, bring it to the valley floor, our city, and do cool things with it. It's just kind of interesting how history kind of repeats itself. That's the opportunity that we, that we have here to look forward to, and so people would say that the railroad created the city, and I think they would probably be right in some respects, but I would argue that water be right in some respects, but I would argue that water created this city. It was the water that created that 2,000-acre wheat field, caused Mr. Stanford to pause, take a second look, and said, there, we will build the town. That's the place we're going to do it. Water changed this town, and it's been part of our history, it'll be part of our future. What we're looking to do is take advantage of a resource that we have where we, where if we get into a position where we can bring our groundwater out of the mountain, onto the valley floor, to make use here to the community, we would then allow our groundwater recharge to recover and have that available to us. It really changes the dynamic of this city to have a surface water supply and a very strong groundwater supply that we can then plan and direct our own future. But it's important that we control it. And so this Sustainable Groundwater Management Act is one of those things we'll have to kind of navigate through to make sure it doesn't get rested from us and get used for other purposes. So with that, thank you for, thank you very much. On behalf of the mayor and the city manager, we respectfully request that the city council authorize us to proceed forward with the Proposition 218 process to get public comment and have a public hearing to change the schedule of rates, fees, and charges for the City of Fresno's public water system. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Appreciate it. We're going to go to the public comment portion of this meeting, and some people have turned in cards, and I'll work through those in order that they were turned in. But you didn't need to turn in a card. You could either, A, fill out a card now and bring it right up here onto the ledge and give it to Todd, and he'll get it to me, or you can wait till the cards have all been gone through and you can still speak. And so everybody will be given three minutes, and then if you don't quite finish, we might be able, we might be able to call you back up. That would be one of the prerogatives of one of the council members up here. And we've got a lot of people in attendance tonight who've been a part of this project for a long time. I've seen a lot of people that have come to multiple water meetings here tonight, so that's, that's really great. I also want to say a friendly hello to Councilwoman-elect Esmeralda Soria. She's joining us tonight, and it's great to have you, Esmeralda. We appreciate you paying attention to this. She'll probably be voting on this in the, in the early spring. And so I'm going to use my council president prerogative and go to about card number nine back here. It's Doug Vagum. And Doug, your participation is one of the reasons we're here, and we're looking at this project, put in an extra couple of months, looking at it, making sure it's correct. So, sir, why don't you start us off tonight?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. Pleasure to be here. Doug Vagum, City of Fresno, 1034 North Poplar. Thank you for the limited opportunity that I'm going to get, even though I'm a co-signer of the goddess here, I have, I could get a fraction of what Tommy got, but I will try to stay with my three minutes. Look, we started this back in July or June of 2013 because the rates were too high. It's kind of ironic that two major entities that watch over these government agencies that are independent, the Chamber, and to be agreed eventually, now that the rates are higher, they're agreeing the rates should be higher. Kind of funny, it becomes a political whim, I guess, and when someone's running for statewide office, you circle the wagons. That's fine, that's done, now they come out again and say the rates are fine. Nothing's changed. Nothing has changed. This forum was not the workshop that we put in the, in the working agreement that you okayed and signed. But nonetheless, it's done. The fact that they missed all the opportunities to really address the poverty, the low-income, the fixed-income folks that are going to be impacted by these rates is alarming to me. The fact that they missed the opportunities to really look at the alternative sources of funding is alarming to me. The fact that they say that they don't even want to look at it in assessment concept because it costs too much. Folks, it doesn't cost you anything. Your police override tax costs you zero. The county doesn't charge you anything for it. It raises its $35 per 100,000 valuation. A $100,000 home only costs $35 a year. You could pay for your $150 million bond with that, $35 a year, and bring down the consumption rates, yet they don't even want you to talk about it. I mean, this is such a limited forum, this is a one-sided show, and if they had a medicine man, they would be selling medicine. The fact, folks, finish what you started. Finish the 60-inch pipe, finish the southeast, the northeast plant across from Clovis North High, add your second one there for a fraction, all your intelligentsia in Plant Two, or in Plant One for Plant Two. You can bring your laterals down to the east as well as to the west. You can delay that plant over there in the southeast because you don't need it right now, and you can do everything. As a matter of fact, if you did that, what I just said, you would have all the water this year going into that plant and still have 8,000 acre feet to do recharge. If you do what Tommy just laid out, those plants would be sitting idle six months of the year. Is that good public resource spending? I don't think so. Is that good public resources from your perspective? Who would buy a machine and a business for that? Finish what you started. The 75-inch pipe he talks about, he hasn't even environmentally assessed that. Go to your own website, look at your own website that talks about the metro plan. That pipe's not even in the metro plan, not even in the metro plan. He says, well, I'm going to put it in thoroughfare so I don't have the environmental assessment. Wait till you get up the page and you talk to four federal agencies, the 28 agencies of the watering districts up there, and see how far you get. It's a boondoggle in waiting. Please, just finish what you started, and you'll have sufficient water, and you'll have sufficient recharge, and there should be recharge water, not recharge the people all over again. Thank you.
Doug, and Doug, I know that you will probably be called back up to answer any questions that council might have. I have a couple, so feel, you know, don't worry about your three minutes, you'll have a little bit more time for sure to express yourself. All right, now I'm going to work through the cards as they've been turned in. So it looks like Tim Barker is up first, and then after Tim is Robert Merrill. So Robert, if you could get ready. And then after Robert is Diane Merrill. And so those are our first three.
Good evening, Tim Barker here. The numbers just don't add up. We're given that the city uses 150,000 acre feet of year with an overdraft of 40,000 acre feet a year. However, the numbers for August water conservation is a 16% reduction in water use. That number increases, that number will only increase as we become accustomed to water-wise consumption. That minimal conservation saves us 24,000 acre feet a year. Armstrong in Dakota Water Treatment Plant coming online will save 7,000 acre feet a year. Infrastructure leakage, typical at 10%, will save 15,000 acre feet a year. Residential, commercial maintenance of faucets, toilets, showers, et cetera, 7,500 acre feet a year. This comes up to a minimum of 53,500 acre feet a year we are saving, not the 40,000 acre feet overdraft from previous numbers. This year, we should be saving 53,000 acre feet. The 40,000 acre feet is an effective number for this. We are saving more than what we're taking out in the overdraft. And then regarding the bond issues, the State Water Resources Board has tried to encourage Fresno to take a 1% loan to expand their northeast treatment facility, which is their recommendation, and add additional water cycling capacity and up to 17 miles of pipeline. The state said they got little response from Fresno. Current bond yield for the City of Fresno with a BAA-1 rating may be as high as 6% versus the 1% state loan. But when you don't, when you take the state money, you have to do what you said you did, you're going to do. When you take a bond, there's no controls or restrictions on what you spend it on. The water forums are presented only to represent the city, which is heavily influenced by special interests. Fresno Irrigation District has presented all forums. That district serves 1.2 million acres. The City of Fresno has 72,000 acres, which is only 6% of that district's water service. Yet they are advocating what is in the best interest of their 94% clients as being in the best interest of Fresno. No conflict of interest has ever been mentioned to the public. San Luis Water District tried to present that the city and agriculture use the same amount of water. Incorrect. Agriculture uses five times at least what the city uses. We, the public and city, have been intentionally misinformed, ill-advised by special interests who have not properly or conscientiously disclosed their conflict of interest. Before anything transpires, we should have a comprehensive, long-term water management plan. Any rate increases should be on a progressive use basis to encourage water conservation. In the words of the mayor on Channel 30 in mid-July, Fresno doesn't have any water problems. According to Columbia University's Study of U.S. Water Infrastructure, attaining, achieving their words, achieving sustainability in our water systems requires a transparent understanding of the factors that influence rates. We need to rethink what the water utility of the future should look like. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Tim.
Councilman Brand, Council President Brand, members of the city council. My name is Robert Merrill. I reside in Council District Six, and I have a PhD in geology. As a geologist with knowledge about Fresno's underground aquifer and the limits to our finite, and I emphasize, finite, water supply, I support the proposed water infrastructure project as necessary and long overdue. I might add, it's been the history of the types of representatives we've had on this council in the past that denied increased rates and improvement of the water structure, infrastructure in the past. That's the history that this city needs to know. We must act now to protect our groundwater for the current generation and for future generations. The current overdraft is not sustainable, and we must act to clean up those parts of the aquifer where the water has become contaminated. The proposal before you will use Fresno's surface water allocation to replace much of the current water overdraft, groundwater overdraft, but that will take a period of many years. Thus, the groundwater becomes a savings account for drought years. The city's surface water allocation is like wages, which replenish our checking account, while the groundwater is the savings account that we rely on in emergencies such as droughts, especially in this state and in the Southwest. My knowledge of past climatic changes, especially droughts, and their impact on previous civilizations in the West and Southwest, is, suggests that the water infrastructure project is also necessary to address the coming impacts of climate change. Postponing a decision favoring this project will only make future corrections of past mistakes more expensive, as well as constraints on per-capita use of consumption of our water. If changes are to be made in the proposal, my suggestion is to limit them to a few more dollars into conservation measures and helping the public understand that, and a maintenance reserve fund. Maintenance is always the thing that's short-changed. We build, but we don't put budgets for maintenance. Nobody likes raising taxes, but those are the choices we must make for the government services we receive. There is no free lunch, there is no unlimited clean water supply, and population growth will further increase water demands. At the four city water forums, I've heard fears that the proposed southeast water treatment facility is to provide for growth, for development. Whether or not this is true might be debatable, but the proper place to address that issue is in the city's general plan, when developers come before the city council with requests to undo parts of those plans that were once adopted. Simply ask at that time, where is the water supply? Who is paying for the past infrastructure investments funded by our current citizen taxpayers? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Diane? And then after Diane, we have Al Smith, Stephanie Frederick, and Susan Cobberley.
Well, I'm Diane Merrill. I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters of Fresno, and I'm also a resident of District Six in the city. I just want to summarize a few things out of our more detailed letter that we submitted to the city earlier, which is agenda, item number seven on the supplemental materials. We support this plan because it will enable the city to construct the water infrastructure to utilize our existing surface water allocations to the San Joaquin and Kings Rivers to address our serious water quality and groundwater overdraft problems. We are particularly concerned about 123 TCP, which is a contaminant that has been detected in 80 wells in the City of Fresno. We became aware of this about a year ago, and we've been watching this issue and are aware that it's soon going to be a regulated contaminant at the state level. Delays in making necessary water system improvements will only increase costs and may subject the city and its residents to state intervention to enforce water quality and groundwater management laws and regulations. It is better if we take charge ourselves and start the process to make necessary upgrades to our water system. One concern that we have is the $1.1 million in the rate plan for water conservation programs appears to be underfunded relative to the $429 million in the plan. And where I saw that is in the actual notice of hearing that there's $1.1 million devoted to conservation programs. We feel that these conservation programs are a crucial component of this water plan, and they should be adequately funded because they make it possible for people on fixed and low incomes to be able to better manage their water use and keep their bill down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening, President Brandow and council members. My name is Al Smith. I'm president of the Fresno Chamber of Commerce. The last time we came and talked about this in this forum, we were supporting the project in concept, but we were kind of uncomfortable with the process that was being used to notify the citizens of these actions. Since that time, I think the city has made great efforts to try to educate and engage the general public, and for that, we congratulate them. You know, there is nothing more in our headlines these days than this discussion of water, whether it's on television or the subject of a water cooler conversation, that's on the proviso that there is water in the water cooler, but no one likes to have to pay more. None of us do, you don't want to, I don't want to. That's just our nature. But that is what we have done in this city for many, many years, and it's time that we quit kicking this can down the road. Our continual groundwater extraction has gotten to the point that it's finally, we've finally got to the point where we need to pay the piper. We needed to do it so long ago, we didn't do it. No one has had the courage to address it, they didn't do it. Postponing it again is like dancing on very dangerous ground. The time has come for us to stop procrastinating and address a real quality-of-life issue in this community. Replenishing the aquifer needs to begin, and that action needs to start now. The need to replace and repair aging infrastructure, to address certain wells for chemical levels that are not acceptable, and then to put in place a strategic plan that guarantees that our citizens have reliable and safe water today and for our children and for our grandchildren. The programs presented tonight, while we wish we didn't have to do it, we didn't have to raise rates, but it strikes a level of achievement that this city needs to do and deserves to have. The chamber urges that you approve this action tonight that the city has proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Council President and members of the city council. My name is Stephanie Frederick. I'm in District Six at 2658 East Olufio Avenue. I support the city's plan. I think it's very intelligent, very sound, and I hope you will direct city staff to initiate the Proposition 218 hearing process. I used to work for, in the planning department of a city government in Southern California. There was a mobile home park in that city whose residents enjoyed extraordinarily low land rents for three, four, five decades. The land changed ownership, and the new owners raised the rents to a reasonable level. The mobile home park residents came shouting to City Hall demanding government intervention. In the ensuing fracas, we noticed something. We never once heard any mobile home park residents say, gosh, I really caught a lucky break for the last 20, 30, 40 years. I saved thousands of dollars. What a gift. We never heard one syllable of gratitude or acknowledgement of this gift that these people had received through sheer accident. We have a parallel situation here in Fresno. We benefited for decades from low-cost water. Individually, we have saved thousands of dollars over these decades. Now, we face reasonable future rates that will give us water and Now, we face reasonable future rates that will give us water and repair the damage that we've done to our aquifer. As you listen to opponents of the proposed new rates in the city's water plan, I urge you to ask them, how much money do you think you saved during the years you lived here? As opposed to, say, living in Bakersfield, or Stockton, or LA, or San Francisco? You had a gift. You got a bounty. And I'm sure your water department could give you some look-up tables so you can supply the answer. The important point is, will people acknowledge, will opponents acknowledge this gift that they've received? I strongly feel that people who cannot acknowledge their past good fortune don't have a lot of credibility in opposing an intelligent, reasonable plan that will keep water flowing in the pipes. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good evening, Council President and members of the city council. My name is Susan Cobberley and I live at 2658 East Olivio, number 1114. I'm in Councilmember Brand's district. I drink my water from my tap. I look forward to doing that every day. I don't want it to stop. I want water to continue to be supplied to myself as well as to the other people of this fine city, and I urge you to adopt this recommended action. Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes isn't very long, so I'm trying to get to the point. Well, I can't talk as fast as Mr. Esquera, so I want to stay on a basic point. When this is done, they're going to go to fifty, about 50% surface water, 50% groundwater, and a little bit of reused water. I think the actual figures are 38%, 13%, then 45%, something like that. I went to all the forums. I wouldn't say they're quite as good as some people. I thought that because water's complicated, it was a lot of opportunity missed to educate people about the complexities of water and the true situation. But you guys are being asked to spend essentially half a billion dollars here, and at the end, you're going to go to half surface water and half groundwater and a little bit of reused water. I think you're missing an opportunity here. You should go beyond just complying with state laws to get to a real leadership position. And I would recommend you go to half, roughly half, 40% reused, re-treated, recycled water, whatever you want to call it, reprocessed sewage, if you want to call it that way, because my neighbors say, "Why can't I water my lawns with reused water? Why do we have to go to virgin water for everything?" So, half surface water, half reused water, and save the groundwater aquifer for either climate change or periods of need or where you don't get your surface allotment, because I don't think we've seen the end of the process. And if we're all agreeing that the problem is you're continuing to overdraft the groundwater, why do you just continue to pump it at a lesser rate? You've got a transition period to build this system, so I think you're remiss if you don't look at the alternative and study the alternatives of half recycled water, half surface water, and save groundwater for the transition period and emergency supply at the end of this investment period. I'll try to answer some more questions if you want it. I know a little bit about this because I worked on groundwater for a while, but I think you're remiss to not look at that as a reasonable alternative to the details of this plan. It's not considered. It wasn't presented at the public forum. It's a possibility, and there are certainly cities in California that use lots more than half recycled water. So, I would suggest you don't go on with this till you have a thorough staff examination of that possibility. Thank you.
I'm Robert Kohlstad, Fresno resident. I've attended every one of the meetings and I will be one of the first to agree that we have a water problem. But in attending these meetings, it was my understanding that the water department was going to go through and answer the questions and have more of a forum than we did, and I'm disappointed in that. A lot of the questions that got answered, I don't, that got asked, I don't believe were answered. Mine weren't. It appears to me now that the rates that are being proposed are more than the rates that they were pre-lawsuit, right? So, I'm not sure. And on top of that, it seems to me that the current allocation, which my understanding is, is 75,000 acre feet, correct? Is a lot less than what we've been talking about, the 180,000 acre feet. It just seems like there's some real disconnects here. And if, in fact, the Kings River system only allows the 75,000 acre feet, then the 185,000 acre feet that we're predicating this on isn't really good math. And I'm not sure how we can justify $400 million on a project if that's the situation. We're just not going to have the water to put through these plants. So, again, I think we have a problem, but I'm not sure it's really been addressed correctly I definitely think that finishing the plant, doubling the capacity in the Clovis plant from 30 to 60 is a good idea, but I also think that the Southwest plant, it's at over 70% of the cost that you've been asked to pay, is a little bit unrealistic for what else you can do with that money. I think that there should be a little bit more discussion, a little bit more review of exactly what you can do with the funds before you actually vote tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Mall and I attended two of the meetings and I went home thunderstruck, thunderstruck, because there were people at those meetings that were saying that we should give the land back in southeast Fresno. We should give the land back to Laffco and let Sanger and Clovis fight over that land and not have any new development, no new growth. There was somebody else that suggested that we not have any outdoor watering. Folks, this isn't the city that I want to live in. And I can assure you, as a Realtor, there won't be many people living in this city. I'm concerned about property values in this city and I'm also concerned about water. Many of us saw Leslie Stahl the other night and there was somebody that said that people up in Stamford have heard about the water problems in Fresno. Well, I think the whole nation heard about the water problems in the Central Valley with Leslie Stahl the other night. It's frightening. It's very, very frightening. I came from Beaverton, Oregon before I moved to Fresno. They have a system, they, their water rates are unbelievable compared to ours. They conserve water and they can't stop the water from coming out of the sky. And, and nobody complains about the water bills there. And from the time that we moved to Fresno in 1987, that's all I've heard about, is our high water bills and we sure can't have water meters and we can't, you know, no one's going to tell me I can't take a 30-minute hot shower. That was a candidate for mayor in 2000. And we, I was on the advisory committee, the utility advisory committee that the city set up, and each one of the city councillors appointed one person to that committee. We made a recommendation very similar to what you are now proposing, but when we made that recommendation in 2011, you totally ignored us. The price would have been a whole lot less, the rates would have been lower in 2011, but you did not even want to have a discussion with us. You were interested in privatizing solid waste. You had one person from each of the council districts and you had two people from the mayor's office. We were ready, able, and willing to go out and promote this thing with our city councillors. We never got asked because nothing was done. Please, go ahead with this project now because it's only going to cost more and as a property, I own three properties in Fresno. I need water. I need to provide water for my tenants. If I don't provide water through the tap, I'm going to have to provide it some other way and that's going to cost me one heck of a lot of money. So, please, don't delay any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention, I didn't touch on it on my first shot here, is the noticing, which is the other part of the settlement agreement. Mr. Esquera did mention the noticing being designed, and I'm happy that Howard Jarvis is taking a somewhat of an upfront look at that. But I am concerned in talking to Mr. Esquera about the designing of some of the, some of the parts of it, and that is, for example, the renters will be giving a red color ballot and the owners will be giving a different color ballot. So, why are we red, you know, scarlet reading the renters? Something wrong with that. And I'm concerned about a process that divides people in renter class versus owner class when the law says that everyone who is a tenant is quote-unquote "equal to be an owner." That's what the law says. I just ask you to take a look at that and the fact that you may get more than 400 of these. And in all due respect to the clerk, to the council's office, they're not equipped to handle tens of thousands that may come in on an easy-to-mail, free postage, free return stamp. And I ask you to design this under the design auspices of the county elections, which already has an automated system ready to go, with some tweaking that the city could help engage. It'd be a lot cheaper than bringing in an incredible amount of staff to try to sort through these, believe me. So, I urge you to do that on the noticing. Get rid of the scarlet letter on renters, please. There's an easy way to differentiate that. I just don't like that whole thing because then they stand out on the one side and then people see, "Oh, you got a red one, you got a blue one." Everyone ought to be treated just like a voter is, equally pleased. That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Doug. Last chance for anybody of the public. Grab three minutes. Come on up.
Good evening. I'm Martha Kohlstad and wasn't planning on making a comment, but actually, talking about tenants and owners and so on, I just want to share, I too attended all four of the meetings, and I thought, I want to congratulate you for trying to get the word out to the citizens, but I have to say, I'm still rather confused on what I think about it after all of this. But I do want to share a little anecdote. I have a young friend who has been a renter for years and years and years and years. She just recently became, rented a house. She was shocked to find out that she would be charged for water because she's never had to really pay for water before being a renter, and she's shocked at how much it costs. And now she's concerned about it. She didn't even know that she could only water, you know, she couldn't water now and that there had been restrictions on it. So, my concern is, how many other people who are out there, renters or people who aren't engaged or aren't paying attention, you know, to our water situation? Unbelievably, everybody here can't imagine that, but that is the truth, and I think a lot of those are very young people. So, I think we need to take that into consideration because these are people who just probably are using water like crazy because they don't care, because they don't, aren't paying for it, and they don't know that there's a situation going on. So, I think we need to think about that, too, because we're all going to be cutting, we already have cut back tons on our usage, but there are a lot of people out there who are not.
Martha? Anybody else? Oh, you've already had a chance, ma'am. Anybody else who hasn't yet taken their three minutes? All right, then. We're going to come up here to council, and Councilman Brand, you're going to start us off.
Déjà vu. I've been here before on this debate. I want to first address, you know, this claims that the process has been really rushed by the city. And I know Mrs. Mall had mentioned, she's right, back in 2011, we did have it and we should have made a change then, but even moving the clock forward, and also Laura Whitehouse, who was my representative, who was there giving the presentation, but even going back to more recent history, in early 2013, then Public DPU Director Patrick Wydmillar gave us a workshop on the water rates. That was early 2013. And since then, we've voted, we've had numerous workshops. We're going to start the process again and we'll come back in February to make a decision. So, that's, just in recent history, two years. I don't call that rushing, two years. That's a lot of public input, and this has been on the TV, it's been covered by the radio, the newspaper. You'd have to live in a cave to not know there's a water debate going on in the city of Fresno. So, everybody's had an opportunity to understand this. And another thing I've heard is that we've not looked at all the alternatives. And I just took some notes down. I know we've looked at infrastructure only. What would that cost? And like Tommy said, about $15 of the $25 raise is roughly, just making the, repairing the broken lines and just totally abandoning the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. So, really, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tommy, the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant is about 70% of the cost when you include the 13-mile pipeline and all the related infrastructure, but since it's being financed on a bond, it's probably, what, about $11 of the raise down the road? So, if you took that whole thing out, you'd still have a pretty substantial raise, probably close to 15 to 20% a year. We looked at expanding the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. That was brought out, that's legitimate. And expanding the plant is not going to be cheap. It's going to cost the same amount of money that's going to cost to build the Southeast Plant, which is roughly $2.60 a gallon. If you do the math on 30 million gallons, that's roughly about $80 million. That's not going to be cheap. And the problem is, that's getting its water from Fryent, which has 60,000 acre feet. Mr. Kohlstad asked that question. That's our allocation from Fryent. We get 120,000 acre feet from the Kings. There wouldn't even be capacity for that one plant to take on the Kings River in the event, hopefully, we get back to full allocations of, and sometimes we get over, we get over 180,000 feet. Sometimes we get over 200,000 acre feet. I'd love to see half of that. We looked at building recharge basins and we talked about, I believe it would take something like 2,500 acres or 3,000 acres of recharge basins to equate to the capacity of the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, which is lower now, but originally 80 million gallons a day. We looked at downsizing, we have downsized now the, at least initially, the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, and we've looked at initially from delivering the water on canals to now delivering the water on a more expensive, but probably in the long run, more economical and safer way to deliver under a 72-inch underground water pipe that would keep the water safe, but in the long run, save money on treating the water, save money on the canal majors, because then we're losing about, I guess, a month or so a year by having the FID do the cleanup on the canals. And we do that, we're pumping water, we're pumping water, it's increasing costs. So, I think in the long run, it's the right move and it'll pay itself off. We've examined different types of financing. That's been out there. That's been out there. We've, and the financing originally was based on, basically, the city going out and getting about $300 million in bonds, and then, over the next three years, spending the money. Now we've got a consultant, C.H. Two-Hill, who says, you should sequence the financing. You should come in as needed. That will save money down the road, in terms of interest rates. And of course, we're going from four years to five years. So I've been at least at one of the water forums, I've watched on video the other water forums, and anybody who had a question, the question was answered. And I know there are people out there asking, and they're legitimate questions, you know. So everything, even including a desalinization plant, was discussed, and that's expensive. I know tonight, we talked about water reclamation, which I agree is down the future, but a water reclamation is not any cheaper than a water treatment plant. They're all going to cost money down the road. And this issue, really, it's been an active issue, debated unfortunately too long, for at least the last year. Most of the opposition and the opponents have not offered sources. It's basically anecdotal, my opinion is, I think this is that. We've offered a list of engineers, hydrologists, economists, all people who have expertise. What else can you do? You just flip a coin and say, this is how we do it? And a lot of the information has been exaggerated, embellished, in some cases outright lies, generalizations, and a lot of it is fear. You can't trust the city. You appeal to this basic cynicism that people have a distrust of government, and for good reasons at all level. And the city itself, I mean, we've made, I don't have to talk with Granite Park, Met Mezzanine, yeah, we've made mistakes here. But we bring in private sector consultants, and then we're criticized for private sector consultants. And people remember the failures. We just completed a $100 million program to put water meters in the city, and it came in on time and under budget, but we don't remember that. But what do you do? I mean, you can't trust the city, these prices are too high, we're not looking at all the, if you do nothing, it'll get worse. The prices will go up. Mrs. Mall's made the point, and I agree with her, is a real simple truth, the simple truth of time and money. And as the clock ticks, the dollar value goes up. Anybody in the construction business knows that if you have a 12-month project, and you're on month 24, you're going to lose a lot of money. That's a simple truth. So what is the alternative? Do we just do, if we do nothing? We just sit here and do what the councils did for the last 50 years, and the rate, the cost is not going to go down, the cost is going to go up. I've seen conclusive evidence that we are overdrafting. We don't have a capacity to have groundwater cover our supply. Tommy, I don't even want any detail about the contamination of 75, 80 wells in the city of Fresno, that produce up to, what, 75 million gallons of water a day? And I know some of the questions are, what do we do? That was in the equation. If those go down, and they will go down, it's not a question of if they go down, it's a question of when they go down. That's all going to be made up. And this decision tonight, in my opinion, will be probably the biggest decision this council will make in the next 25 years. It's that important. We're going to have an opportunity to offer our children, our grandchildren, 50-plus years of a secure, reliable, safe water supply. And we have an option now. Now, the new State Water, Groundwater Sustainability Act, are we going to trust the state to come in sometime in the future and say, Fresno, you're not doing your job? We can control our own destiny. And I'm not going to go on and on, because we're going to have another debate on the technical sides of the issue, but I think it's imperative, and I urge all my council members, to support this Prop 218 rate increase. And I do agree with Mr. Vegem on the process that was done last. I think that was done, can be done better. So we're going to do it better this time. Everybody's going to get a ballot, it's going to be clear what they're voting on, and they have a clear opportunity to protest. So if we set 135 ballots, 135,000 ballots, and we get 1,000 or 2,000 ballots coming back, based on two years of media saturation, that tells me, not that people in Fresno, yeah, I'm glad you're raising my rates, but they understand it, they get it. There's nothing more fundamental than water and sustaining life. Here's an opportunity for Fresno to secure its own future. And with that, I'll make a motion that we initiate, is that the proper term, City Attorney? We initiate the Prop 218 protest process?
Yes, or approve the staff's recommendation.
Okay, we approve the resolution as drafted.
Second.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Councilmember Quintero, you're up.
Thank you, Vice President Baines, soon to be President. I want to thank everybody for showing up this evening and sharing your thoughts and concerns with all of us. It's been very helpful and enlightening, and Tommy, thank you for the good presentation. The, I've got a few things I wanted to ask you for clarification purposes.
Yes, please.
And thank you for meeting with me earlier in the week as well. Now, you're going to be coming back, and basically, in February, we're going to have a public hearing and then take council action at that time. Now, at that time is when you'll come back with another, like the final, final report in terms of what some of the things that the council had asked to be included or looked at, and then at that time, we can say, yes, we like it, no, we don't like this part of it. Okay, that's good. I wanted to add a few more things to the, to the report that you're going to present us on. And, City Attorney, see if I say this the right way. To ask staff to return with options on how the city can help seniors save money on their water bill. Okay? I'd like to take a look at expanding on Councilmember Brandon Capriolo's water conservation program that include, to include rebates for seniors, assessments, advising them how they might save water, and how we might find the funding to help them with a subsidized rate. And I'd like to have those options before we, the presentation's made in February, if possible. The other part that I was glad to see is that, the, one of the reasons that I wasn't real supportive at the start of this whole process, was a concern I had was that the fees all came all at once, and I thought it would be difficult for a lot of property owners, given the state of the economy. So I was glad to see that, that you clarified that the proposal, that the fee increases would be done incrementally. And I think that's, that would be a big help as well, and that we keep on looking at the, keeping that in there. The third part is that we look at, you made a statement that said that one of the thoughts was, or comments from these hearings that you had, was that new development pay their fair share. And I really think that's important, that we look at for the water infrastructure on any new development, because a lot of times, they say, well, the home buyer's going to go ahead and cover the cost of that, but I think the developer has to also get involved and be a part of this, this process to get that infrastructure put in. And basically, that's all I had, but I'd like to see those included in the, in the report you give us prior to the, to February the 15th.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
Is that all that it takes, Tommy, to include that in a report to council? Because, you know, the first time that this came around, I did not vote for it, because I believed it was too much for my constituents to bear, as far as the rate increases. So that's something that I would join my colleague, Member Quintero. I'm also interested in the exact same questions that he is. So is that something that we have to put as part of the motion, or he can just do it? Okay.
We're just going to do it.
Get it done. Thank you.
Get her done.
Okay.
The second agrees. Councilmember Jean.
You know, Tommy, it's such an important issue, you probably shouldn't be sitting up walking back and forth. Those, those great exercises for all of us. Obviously, you know, this, not only déjà vu, but I know that this has been talked about a lot. And actually, I just wanted to remind Carol, you were right, there was those recommendations that was done, and I, and I want to say that I was probably the only one left hanging that was willing to move and was outvoted and got killed, so I just want to let you know, there was a council member out here that was, that was even at that time, early stage on, that was ready. But, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit longer for all of us to get where it needs to be. It is what it is. But I probably won't be here when the vote does happen, but I think my issue has always been the same. And to Mr. Vegem, you know, we talk about the fixed income and the poor in the community. We have a very diverse community. And I think I've been pretty general in terms of what that means, but I'll be a little bit more specific at this particular point. You know, I think this body should probably, even the incoming body should have an idea as to what media tools have you gone out and used in terms of ethnic media, and identify those. And how have you gone out about doing, where in the communities, and how those communications are done, making sure that, that a larger population really understands. As one of our speaker, Mr. McCovin, says, the water is not a simple issue. It's a very complex issue. But for many, we see it very simple. And sometimes trying to put that complex issue and trying to make it simple, it's very hard. And so it takes some concerted effort at a very grassroots level, to make sure that why people are paying, even though it's still one of the best rates that we're paying in the Central Valley, that why these rates are going at this way, and how it's being done, and all these connections, and what we're looking for the future. Because whether you're poor, fixed income, at what level, we're all rate payers. And so it concerns me a little bit that, that our community meetings are set at certain locations, and I see the pictures, and I don't see the diversity that I would expect to see in such a very diverse community that we have here. So that is something that I'm going to pay close attention to, since I'll have a little bit more free time to do. But those are important. And, and so I think there should be a very clear strategy. That's how that is going to be communicated, and what the expected outcome should be like, to make sure that we have the input that this important issue really needs. And understanding, even when those mailers goes out, is it worth it to look at the different languages? Right?
Right.
If it's even worth it, to make sure that all of our residents have an opportunity for input. So on the community side, that is extremely important. And that should be very defined, very specific, very strategic. As we say, the cost, everybody pays into the cost, so they deserve that piece of the cost, going back to the community. So that's my suggestion.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Jean. Councilman Quintero.
I forgot one thing. Mr. Vegem? Hi, Doug. I just, no questions, and no need to speak. No, but I just want to really thank you for getting us to this process and making it a more open and transparent process. In result, some folks are going to like, and some may not, but I'm just really thankful for all your hard work and time you put into this. It's done a lot for our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you. The scarlet letter is the only thing I'm concerned about. Okay, so if you could ask if that's going to have a problem?
Thank you.
Councilman Olivier.
Yeah, thank you. And Tommy, when we were talking about low income, seniors and low income, I mean, if you could take a look at both of those.
Okay.
As part of that motion, if that would be okay. Is it illegal under the, under Prop 218 to offer some kind of tiered rate? And can you explain that to me? How is it illegal? And how do municipalities and water districts get around something like that?
A tiered rate can be done, but it takes a very careful analysis of the actual cost to providing service to each of the residents. You have to have that history of providing the service with the rates to know what the actual costs are. And to charge a lower rate, you have to be able to justify that lower rate.
Doug, I think the question is...
Unless you're going to subsidize the rate from another source.
Yeah, Doug, I think the question is, is, under Prop 218, it's my understanding that one rate payer cannot be, or one service customers, or group of customers cannot have a rate that's being used to subsidize another set of customers.
That's correct.
And so what Tommy and I have been tasked to do, and we hear you loud and clear, is that we will have to go back and look at some other resources, other revenues, that might be available to help buy down the rate for either low income or low-income seniors. But we will provide the amount of money that may be available for this, and then a council can make that determination whether or not to allocate those funds towards that purpose.
And I appreciate it very much. I mean, there's no question that this is needed, there's no question that we need water here in Fresno and in the Central Valley, but, I mean, there's no question also that there will be heartburn among many, many households in our community over this kind of increase. And I don't get a lot of constituent phone calls about the votes that I take here. Most of the constituent phone calls that I receive are about streets and sidewalks and trees and streetlights and homeless, things of that nature. But I did receive quite a few phone calls on water rates last time we tried this. So I appreciate your good work on this.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Councilman Olivier? Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. And I'll make my comments brief. I know tonight, we're really just initiating the process, so I want to keep in perspective of what we're really doing tonight. We're not actually deliberating whether or not to initiate a new rate structure just yet. But in light of where this process ends, I'll make some comments about that. You know, I was, I had a great discussion with some friends of mine the other night about water. And it's an interesting thing, when you run for city council, and we all get elected, and all of us did, none of us talk about water in our campaigns. We talk about real exciting things like job creation and, you know, new development projects and, and all of the fun stuff that we're going to do when we're elected, and the principles we're going to bring to the seat. I know that, because I did it. And then when you get, when you get here, shortly after all the glamour peels away, you realize what your job is really about. And I can tell you that, without question, the most shocking aspect of my job is the priority that I realize that water is to our citizenry. It isn't the most, it isn't the sexiest subject, and in my opinion, very humbly, after being here for the last few years, that it may in fact be one of the most, if not the most complex issue that we have to deal with up here. And so I completely share the sentiment, Ms. Kohlstad, about not understanding, after going to almost every forum, listen, I didn't understand after two or three years. It took, you know, hours of one-on-one meetings. It took a lot of time and energy and investment, and I'm a council member, and I get a lot of information. So I can sympathize with the public of still not quite being sure where we're at today. I get it, I do. Because it's not easy. It's complex. And if you all think it's complex for you, it's 10 times more complex for us. And so I say that, because in realizing that, I've realized what the gravity of water is to our society. It is probably the most important thing that we have to maintain here as an asset. You know, and I've said this a million times, and I'll say it again, for the sake of, you know, being consistent. You know, people turn on the tap and water comes out, and we think, great. It is a resource that is totally taken for granted by most people. And we think it's, somebody mentioned it's finite. I thank you so much for reminding us, it is finite. We don't think about that, but it is a finite resource. And what it takes to deliver water to the tap... And what it takes to deliver water to the tap that's clean and potable is quite a process. And that process does cost money. And right now, I am absolutely convinced that that process is in jeopardy if we don't do something. We will be totally derelict in our duty as electeds if we didn't do something to address that process. So I'm gonna stop there because there's a time when we'll have a much larger hearing, when we will have a fuller debate about the rate structure and about what we're actually gonna vote on initiating if we come to, and it comes to that point. But I just wanted to give, at least put my thoughts on the record that this is, may, this may be one of the most serious things that we do, is ensuring that the drinking source is reliable to our citizens. And most, and I would say 95 to 98% of our citizens take it for granted. I was one of them. I was one of them. But trust me, folks, it's very complex, the idea of taking water and making it clean and delivering it to you. It's very, very, very complex. And so I commend the council this, this evening and all of the, all of these months. This has been the buildup of a long time for having to get to this point. And I commend, I commend my colleagues for stepping out on the ledge and doing something that other councils would not do before them. But we're here and we have to make tough decisions. We make them all the time. But I think initiating this process and seeing this process through is certainly the right, the right decision tonight. And finally, I do want to acknowledge the fact that I think the process was made better. So the very first time we went through this, I think there have been, there's been value added to this the second time around. Now, that value cost us a lot of money, but there was, there was value added to this process this time around. So I commend my colleagues and administration, Tommy, for really making the process better. Certainly not perfect. I, I agree with a lot of what comments of what my, my friend and colleague, Councilmember Jean, said about the diversity in the, in the forums. And so we've got to do a better job of that, but overall, the process was better. Thanks, Bruce, and, and staff. We appreciate that.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I too want to add my thank you to all of you for being here. And I, I think I've seen about every face in the room at these different forums. And so I know you care. I know you care about our city. You care about our future. And, and we all appreciate that. And we appreciate you being here tonight as well. It's really, really critical to the process. So thank you for that. I wanted to talk about three things. One is, well, actually another thing. I see all those faces out here that we saw at the water forums. They did a great job. I learned so much from those forums and I learned so much from the questions of the people participating in those forums. Some things I agreed with, some things I didn't agree with, but I listened to it all and it was really, really informative. And I thought our crew, our city, our mayor did a great job in, in organizing those and bringing them forward and answering, giving a summary at the end of each and going into the next level and addressing the problems and the questions and refining answers. So I really, for me, it was really exciting. And our 2011 group was there, among other aficionados of water from FID and every place else. So I thought the forums were excellent. The three points I wanted to make, one, water conservation. Don't, we can't let off the gas. We have to stay on that conservation. It's part of this overall plan. The surface water plant isn't the answer. It's part of the entire process to assure us that clean water, safe water for our future generations. So we have to maintain that, that conservation. And George, I forgot the phone number for the city, the city staff that will tell. I think someone asked about, I think Sal mentioned the seniors wanting to know about educating them on water use, water conservation. And I didn't bring it on my packet. I have it in the back of my office. But the city staff is more than willing to go out and visit any home and advise you of what you need to do and how you can improve your water conservation efforts. So it's very readily available. Second point for me, I've said two things all along every time I've spoke on this issue. One, when my constituents elected me, I told them during the campaign, I'm not gonna kick the can down the road. I'm not gonna do what's been done in the past. I'm not trying to be too critical. But I know from my beliefs and my participation in government, I'm here to make tough decisions. And so we're not gonna kick the can. I'm not gonna kick the can down the road. I'm not gonna pass the buck. I'm not gonna delay, defer. I'm gonna face it head on with your help and assistance and the staff and everybody, my colleagues. We can come up with some really, really effective solutions. And I think this is one of those. My third point is that, again, from the beginning, I've been concerned about AB 1739 and SB 1168. They basically require that we create a groundwater sustainability plan that would be used to reverse and prevent overdraft in the aquifers by monitoring how much water is being removed, taking steps to reduce use when necessary. Here's some important parts to me. Among other management tools, these bills require that large users, public and private, monitor and report their water use each year in order to facilitate management. That's a heck of a burden. You talk about expensive. And here's the part that's, that really gives me heartburn. If local governments fail to show progress, officials would step in and write and then enforce local rules. At that point, folks, we lose local control of a local resource. I'm not prepared to do that. It's our resource. It's our issue. We know better than Sacramento. We know better than Washington DC. We have the ability to take care of this problem ourselves. And that's what we've been doing and will continue to do. So we'll have a more, more times to talk about this, but those are the important things to me. And I will be supporting this, this action tonight. Thank you.
All right. Screen is clear. I'm gonna make a few comments. But first, I noticed that the mayor joined us. I know you were over at the Council of Governments. Would you like to say anything or? We can give you three minutes, Mayor.
I'll take one. How about that?
All right.
Good evening, Council President and members of the council. I'm very pleased to be at this point after an extended due diligence phase on the city's water rate plan. I too am grateful for this additional time that we've had. We've had four community forums. 250 people attended one or more of those forums. Plus, we had a financing summit with a small group of people who were invited for a full day summit to explore all kinds of financing options. And I'm very pleased with the work our staff has done to bring this modified rate plan before you tonight and ask for your support to initiate the 218 process. Appreciate very much all of the council members' comments, particularly Councilmember Capriolio. I share the same sense of urgency about not kicking the can down the road and believing very strongly that it's our responsibility to address the problems of the past. We've had to do that with our financial deficits and now we're doing it with our water deficits. And our decades and decades of groundwater overdrafting potentially stops with this generation. And I think it's while difficult, I believe we put together a prudent plan that smooths out the increases and that takes modest steps towards addressing the water deficits that we've had now for decades. So I certainly encourage the council to move forward tonight to initiate the 218 process and want to alert the public to be on the lookout for the information they'll be receiving in the mail with additional noticing requirements that we've agreed to. We're going above and beyond the, the call of duty to make sure people know what's in their mailbox and how they have the opportunity to respond and to express their opinions on these proposed rate increases. So with that, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. I'm gonna, I have a whole list of things that I need to ask different people. And so I might even bounce back and forth a little bit. I want to start with my observations. I might say a few things that are politically incorrect tonight. My observations, I came to one of the forums, the last one, which was last week on Monday. I think that they could have been run dramatically better. So I disagree with Councilman Capriolio. I don't think it was intention to run bad, but the meeting that I saw, I could see how people could leave confused, even more confused. And I know we took great efforts that it would not turn out that way, but I still felt that it did turn out that way. I think we could have done a little bit better job, ask, answering people's questions directly as they asked them. There was a, there was a panel and a time for questions prior to the panel. And, and then the panel, it just got, to me, it got confusing how the meeting was trying to be run. But everybody's got their different ideas of how to run meetings. And, and so I think it was, the motive was good. I wonder if the other three meetings were like that, I could see how people could have a problem. What I will say is, and one of my friends in the audience, Martha Colstad, mentioned this in her comments tonight, was that we did reach out. The city of Fresno did a great job of reaching out to the community. Now, what does that mean? I, I guess that's very subjective too, but on the radio stations that I listen to, I heard that the water forums were being announced in advance. I even heard that they were being, tonight, come tonight is the last water forum or come tonight is the second to the last water forum. You know, I, I wonder if people really are reachable in our society now. So I think that we reached out. I saw that the room was pretty packed the night that I came, that part. I think the city did a good job on announcing the meetings and, and getting the word out there through social media. Martha, I don't think it's the city's job. I mean, we can't educate people that don't want to be educated. So that's very tough to put on the backs of the city. I was at a, a function last night in North Fresno in District 2 and started talking to a person that I know about this, this subject. And he, he, he literally was talking about all of the same questions that we've had answered for us for months and months and months. So it's very, it's nerve wracking when people are still asking questions that you've answered point blank. Tommy, in a few minutes, I'm gonna ask you some of those point blank questions. Just, I just want to get them on the record one more time. So I am kind of mixed. I have mixed feelings on how we've spent the months between revoking the Prop 218 circumstance early in the summer and where we're at today. So that's, for me, that's a mixed bag. I, I think, I still think we could have done better, but I'm appreciative that we took the time to reach people. I still think there's a lot of confusion in our city. And I think once the rate increases go up, we're gonna notice a lot of confusion. And it's unfortunate because we try so hard to make that not the case. I'm gonna ask a couple of questions of different people. And Mr. Vegem, I want to start with you if you can come up to the microphone. And unfortunately, prior to this set of circumstances, you and I have had some great conversations in the past. And, and I've really appreciated your input into our city. And then we fell into a lawsuit and you and I couldn't talk to each other. But we can talk tonight. And so I want to ask you a question. And I felt, I've heard a little bit of your sentiments that, that you kind of agree things could have been done better between when we stopped the process and starting again tonight. But we had a lawsuit between the city of Fresno and yourself and some others. And there was an agreement made. Do you feel like that, that the city has kept its promises to you?
To be honest with you, Mr. President, no, because it said roundtable discussion. And when you look up what a roundtable discussion is, Wikipedia or any other source, roundtable discussions were, you're sitting next to someone and you're throwing ideas out and those ideas are gathered by staff and brought back if they're doable or not doable. This was a presentation on a theater type setting where they asked people to come up and give a presentation. Q and A from the audience, limited time with Q and A. And people drifted all over the place, from desaltingization plants to sludge material somewhere. I mean, it was just crazy. We've lost focus. So we really, that's why you still have a lot of confusion in this community. So to your answer, no, I don't believe they were.
Okay. But I want to ask you some specifics, Doug, because of things that, that you were commenting on it last summer. I don't hear them. I don't hear you commenting on some of those same things. So I want to bounce them off and see.
Sure.
If you're okay with some of this, some of the responses that the city staff has worked up. You used to ask us, or you used to say that this was about South Fresno development, okay? And then we went through a process and Tommy and others from our Durham department have, in their opinion, shown that this is not about South, Southern development or about developers. Now, are you, just on that one issue, are you satisfied there or do you still think it's about developers?
Well, Mr. President, I've never been concerned about growth. And I think Mr. Brandon and I had it out one day here. It's never been my issue that we should be anti-growth. But at the same time, I don't see how you can take all the water from a community of five communities or four communities, Clovis, Fowler, Sanger, Fresno, Kerman, and say that you're not, you're the only one with the water. And you're not gonna be the one with the growth because they won't be able to grow. You have to show sustainable water. And if you're the only one that has sustainable water, you're the one that's gonna grow. My position is if you're so certain that you're not gonna grow to the southeast and this plant is not gonna ever feed water to the southeast until some way, way down until, I think I've heard a council member say, until they're long gone. Well, then just go to LaFgo and give it back and let Sanger and Clovis and Fowler come in on it. I don't agree with that. I agree with the young, the lady that came up representing a realtor. But be truthful. If you have water and there's no one else who can grow in this area because they don't show sustainable water, and that's the new law under the government's governor's signature, you are the one that's going to be the growth. And I'm just saying, you gotta come up with a different formula to help offset that cost. That's all I've been saying. No, that hasn't been removed from the table. So to answer your question, yeah, I still believe it's a growth issue.
And then, and then also, one of the things you talked about a lot early in the year was that this is North Fresno or other areas of Fresno paying for infrastructure in Southern Fresno. And you want it to be more localized?
Well, no. I, I never said that in those exact terms. What I did say is that you do have a provision that you already use every day you annex somebody in or that you bring in a new subdivision. You bring in a assessment districts to pay for street lighting and repairs and other things that are part of a process that where a developer with one vote, votes yes. And a hundred different parcels that are subdivided are automatically hinged to that yes vote. I'm saying you could do the same process by bringing water into this. And I say it's better to have a Ford and a Chevy system that answers all our questions and gives you as much water as you want than to build a Cadillac system that may not even be running all the time. That's one of the biggest problems I have.
Okay. All right. And I might call you back up again in a little bit. I'm gonna get a little bit of a conversation, but all right. Thank you. Let's see. Tommy, I'd like you to come up for a minute. And can we pull this stuff back up on the screen?
Yes.
All right. All right. On this screen that shows alternative solutions considered. This one. That one. Okay. So on number three down there, this is one that I've heard the most or the one that I've heard. And I heard it when I came to that meeting, which is, why don't we just expand the Northwest Surface Water Treat, Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant now? Let's do that now. Let's get it back up to thirty, uh, an additional 30 MGD. And then sometime in the future, build the Southeast Treatment Plant, but make it more about a 40 or a 50. Okay. Now, this item is more than the one that you're suggesting today, which is at the top of the page there. But it's not a lot more, but, but it is definitely more. But my problem is, seeing that in the 15 months that this project has been delayed, we've, we've incurred an additional $8 million to the bottom line. So I need the citizens of Fresno to understand that first. Now, this delay, and Councilman Baines just mentioned it in his comments, this delay was good, but it didn't come without cost. Every day that you sit and you don't act, the costs are going up. Now, in this type of project, two of these talk about doing less now and then more later. And if we put that more in the future, there's a good chance that those prices could rise. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's a guess.
That's, that's an estimate based on.
Now, that's an estimate based on right now.
Right now.
Uh huh. So if we wanted to add that Southeast Treatment Plant later, we have it pegged in today's dollars at 131 million. But we've wasted, we, we, we procrastinated 15 months on this project and lost 8 million. If that thing stays offline, I, I think these future things, I, I can't vouch for those numbers. I'd, I'd be surprised if they didn't go higher.
That's correct.
All right. So now, the very next. And they're really similar to the two that I just asked Mr. Vegum. So, but a lot of people still don't get this, or they haven't heard. Tonight's their chance, or maybe somebody in the audience will talk to them, or somebody, or maybe they'll see it on cable television. But is this plant, the Southeast Surface Water Treatment Plant, is this plant for developers? Are we taking taxpayer dollars and giving it to developers by building this plant for them?
No.
So can you go into that a little bit?
Yeah, so, talked about it a little bit earlier. So right now, we're overdrafting the equivalent of about 40 million gallons a day. That's a negative 40 million gallons a day. We got 26 wells, it's about 30 million gallons a day that are at the point of going dry, and we'll have to either replace them, or, we definitely have to replace them. So that's 30 million gallons. So that's 70 now, that's minus 70 million gallons. We have this TCP regulation that we have to deal with, and that has, it's been detected in 80 wells. It has, the state has telegraphed where they think the reg might be, and if the reg turns out where it is, we'll lose about 80 million gallons a day. So the 80 and the 70, we're right now looking at a deficit on well production, about 150 MGD. We're going to, and so with a straight face, I'm going to go to the state and say, "I'm losing 150 MGD. Trust me, when I build an 80 MGD plant, that I can get into balance." That's the trick we're really kind of, what we're trying to do is, 80 MGD tries to recover the hole that we've created over time since we've been recording groundwater elevations. You know, the question about growth is, and I think somebody had said it earlier, you know, if we're, if we're talking about this being a growth issue, what we need to really realize is the growth we're talking about, is the growth that's happened in this valley from when Leland Stanford said, "Let's put a town here," to today, and all the people that moved here, we all contributed to the groundwater overdraft. And right now, we're convinced, we're convinced, we convinced the state that 80 MGD will cover the regulatory requirements that they have coming after us. That's the, that's our, that's our plan. 80, they may ask for more. They, they just may ask for more, and we're going to have to argue hard that 80 is, we feel good on the 80, and don't ask us for anymore. Now, I can tell you, you know, so part of that, and Mr. Capioli read the regulation, the way that regulation reads, there's a clause in there, because there's a recognition that maybe somebody out there in the state did all this stuff 25 years ago. And there's a law, and there's a provision in the law that says that if you can prove with your data that you are currently in balance, that your extractions and the inputs that go in are even, you're at zero drawdown on the oil for, they don't talk to you anymore. You can show them that data, and they'll say, "Okay, you're good. We'll, we'll pass you and go on to somebody else." We're going to be hard-pressed to convince them that 80 MGD is a number that we can rely on to help correct the overdraft that we're on. It's a long answer, I apologize, but that's...
Yeah. And so I'm going to bring you back to the short answer version of that. Okay. Because I've heard, I've heard some people say that this plant is just for developers and the, and not just the developers, but the development of South Fresno, and Southeast Fresno, excuse me. And it's being placed on the backs of other areas of Fresno who've already paid to have their infrastructure built. And now, the southeast section of town is lagging, so now, we're going to go down there and build out the south end of town for them, they should just do it themselves.
Right.
And, and yet, I've heard you say that this is not about future, any future growth at all, it's about the needs that we have currently.
Right. People who live here now, all of us who live here now, who drink, irrigate, we've created a hole in the ground, this 80 MGD, that's why we have the big pipes there, the big black pipes are intended to get the water out of the plant, get it out into the system as far and deep as we can, so we can start turning off wells in all those areas where people, where people live today, right now, and I've got to turn their wells off in their neighborhood, so I can replace it with water out of the mountains. That's the intent of what we've got to do. And then, when we've had that question in the forums, we've talked about it in terms of, you know, even if we were to build a dome or a moat around this city, and nobody else could move in, and nobody else could move out, we stayed at 509, 515,000, we'd still need an 80 MGD plant to cover the hole, and we'd still have a hard time convincing the state that that was enough.
Okay. And similar to that is, and this was a discussion the first, in the first go-round, I haven't heard it as much now. I believe it's true, but some people might need to hear this one more time. Does the water, how does the water coming into the Southeast Treatment Plant, does it help people that live in the north that are also going to be paying for water? And, and tell us how that helps other taxpayers in other areas of the city that don't live in the south end of the city.
So if you look at this map right here, you see the dotted, I'm colorblind, so that's why I apologize, I'm on the red. I said red, because I don't, I'm colorblind. So I'm going to say that's a red line going down, the dashed one?
Yeah, brown line.
I know that's black. So that's how we'll move water north and south. We can water, move water north and south along that big transmission main, so that we can run it up and down, run it down from the north southwest, run it up from the southeast, and then we have the pipelines to distribute off of that. So it's kind of, think of it like a street grid, and so that would be Highway 41, going up and down, getting people in and out. And then we have all of the feeder streets that would go off. That's how we're going to feed water throughout the city and try and get it really out here on the west side.
Okay. Then the very next page is this page, cost of capital projects.
Yes.
And I want to stop here, even though I just did it again, I, I just did it a few minutes ago. For the 15-month delay, the additional cost we've incurred is $8.6 million. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, explain that to somebody who thinks that, what?
Right. So construction, the construction cost is, so right now, there's a, there's an index that is used nationally, and then they also have regional zones where they can pinpoint it recently. It's a construction cost index and the building cost index. Every government agency, private agency uses that to estimate the cost of construction forward, and you can also look at cost of construction backward, because they keep the indexes pretty tight. The indexes right now are running about 2.5%. The historical trend on that, over the last 50 years, has been 3%. And at no time does it ever go negative in the, in that period of time. So think about unemployment kind of goes up and down, Dow Jones goes up and down, CPI goes up and down. The construction cost index always goes up. It's just a phenomenon how that works. And so right now, it's running 2.5%. That's a 2.5% estimate right there, what we're showing. We're confident that that is, will hold, but again, we've talked about high-speed rail being something that might accelerate the cost of construction. The Bus Rapid Transit Project might accelerate the rate of construction dollars, but we're confident we've got it built in that we can, we can cover those.
Okay. So, and I come from a crowd where we like everything perfect.
Yes.
We want everything perfect. We want the best plant at the best price, and we want every drop of water squeezed out of that plant, right? Now, sometimes, and I'm very familiar with this crowd, sometimes, we don't do anything because we're waiting on the perfect. And what if we took another 15 months and waited for the perfect? Or tried to get to the perfect, probably to discover we wouldn't get to the perfect then either. But this is what I'm afraid of. And if this council, although this might not be perfect, if this council hesitates, like councils in the past have done, and doesn't act soon, then we could come back in a matter of short years, or another couple council election rounds, cycles, and find that this project could be almost completely unbearable on the citizens.
That's a correct statement. And then that's why we offered the chart on the left there, the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Plant. The original plan I saw was back in the 1990s. If we would have built it then, as it had been recommended, we would have paid a dollar a gallon.
Okay.
We waited. We waited till 2,000, went up to a buck fifty.
Now, the very next page. The one that says raw water supply. You're comparing the original plan from, from last summer to the plan that we're looking at now. The raw water supply is a huge disparity. We've gained a lot of mon, we've spent a lot of money there, right? And I don't, and so here's what I think has happened. I think that a lot of people were expecting, through all of these meetings, we were going to really impact the bottom line and drop the cost substantially down. And the truth is, if it wasn't for this one single problem, these numbers would look dramatically different, right? We would have dropped the overall cost of this project down, but we have one major increase in there, and I, I need the citizens to know about that. We were going to supply water through an open ditch, and we found out in the process, because we hired a management team, the management team found out that's an undoable idea. And tell us about that.
So it, it was environmental impact statement, or environmental impact report that was prepared. It had two alternatives in it. Dedicated, single-purpose pipeline, use the canals as the, it was the raw water delivery system to the new plant. Both those options were in there. The preferred option, the, the recommended option at that time was the canal. And the canal, $30 million for the canal was canal improvements, land acquisition, all the things we needed to do to make the canal work. And then as all projects work, you then go out with the regulatory agencies and say, "Okay, here's, we want to kind of walk you, talk you through," and you do a drive-by windshield tour of the project. And in doing that, the state regulatory agencies, the ones that manage the public health pieces of it, the ones who really are concerned about what we deliver to the taps of the citizens of Fresno, looked at that open canal, and some of the things that are occurring in it, and the risks of things that occur in it, and said, "You know, that is really not in the best interest of public health and safety. Our preference is, you go over to the other alternative you looked at in the EIS, and go for the raw waters, go for the, the dedicated pipeline, single-purpose, 72-inch pipeline." And so we made the change over to that. And that was what drove us to come up with that project.
So this, some state regulatory agencies were reviewing what we were submitting to them, and they're saying, "Hey, this, this open canal's a red flag."
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And wrote a letter to that effect.
So now, now we have to bury, acquire land, put in a pipeline, bury the pipeline, we can return the land to use to the people, but there's a pipe underneath there now that's a lot more expensive than running a canal. And is that, that might be oversimplifying, but that's a big price, that's why that price jumped from 30 million to 98.
That's exactly right. The, the, that is for the 72-inch Kings River Pipeline project, is also the Kings River, I mean, the Frank Kern Canal Pipeline in there. But, and while it is a bigger, it is a more expensive, is a higher level of service facility. It's single purpose, only we're in there. We're not running stormwater in there, we're not, we're in irrigation water in there, it's just our facility. And the public health and safety protection was really what drove the state to say, "We really would encourage you to think about a pipeline."
Okay. Next page. This one that has the rates on it. Because another good friend of mine in the audience tonight said that rates, to him, rates seem like they're higher. And, you know, I can't let somebody walk out the door thinking that the rates are higher now than, than what we had set six or eight months ago. So, so in the yellow is the original plan, and then the new plan is in the blue line right above it. So in the first, let's just look at the first year. Originally, we had $33, a rate jump, a rate jump up to $33. Now, for the first year, the rate jump is going to be up to $28, $5 cheaper than original.
Correct.
The second year, very similar, $5. We were going to go from, we were going to be at $41 a month. This is the average person in Fresno, not everybody, but the average. We were going to be in year number two at 41, now we're going to be at 34. Year number three, we were going to be at 44, now we're going to be at 39. Then we start kind of catching up out in years number four and five. Is that correct? So...
That is ac, I, I appreciate you calling out the colors, because I was going to get caught on that, but yes, that, as you've described, is perfect.
Okay. Because I know that Councilman Quintero and Councilman Olivier especially were no votes last time, and, and one of the reasons was, is because they were really worried about these rates on their districts. And I completely understand, I'm worried about rates in District 2 as well, so, all right, thank you. I think, I think that's done, I'm done with that.
Thank you, sir.
I still need you up there for a second, though. Couple other things. There was a guy in the crowd tonight, this, the guy's name I couldn't pronounce, McCubbin, I think it was, or, anyway, he talked about throwing in a little treated water into this mix in the future. Now, the truth is, I've had some talks with you, and there are, you know, great opportunities coming from treated water. And I wanted him to know that the city of Fresno is also talking of treated water. So in 60 seconds, can you tell us a little bit about what the future might be?
Yeah, so we have a recycled water master plan, we have a recycled water facility that is, contract has been awarded, and we are prepared to go ahead and make that, get that construction started, to start the recycled water program at the Regional Wastewater Plant. Just to give you a sense of comparison, you know, for treated water coming out of the mountains that we would treat, we're talking about 260 a gallon. We're doing a 5-MGD module at the Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's going to cost us $5 a gallon to produce that water before we get it out to the system. So right now, we have a 5-MGD module that we're going to get ready to build. We're following that with the distribution system pipelines, and that'll get water out into the, into the distribution system, into a new distribution system. And our staff is currently working on trying to identify which of the wells we will be able to throttle back or turn off as a result of having that alternative source of water available to the community.
All right. Okay. So two, two last things. I don't think it's unreasonable to, to send out everybody's notice the exact same. What is the, what was the original thought process of...
Yeah, the original thought process was just, what we wanted to make sure we were able to do was, I'll pick on Mr. Capiolo, Councilman Capiolo. If he was the owner of the property and lived somewhere, and he had a tenant living on his property, we didn't want to double count them. So a blue one would tell, "Okay, here we got it." And so we only count one for each parcel. So that was the intent, that we just found a way to distinguish between which one are we going to, and if we had to count one, we would have counted the property owner one at that place, because that's really the Prop 218. It didn't matter, we just were going to count one of the, one of the votes. It was just distinguish those duplications at parcels where we had the potential to get two back, and that's what was our intent.
Okay. And I, and I understand that.
And I, and I'm, again, I'm colorblind, so red didn't mean a lot to me, but I didn't mean to offend anybody.
And you know what, I, and I even actually appreciate what you're trying to do there. And I think nine times out of 10, that's a great answer. This time, I think that it's not unreasonable to send them all out the same, treat everybody the same, even if it means it takes a little more time counting them at the end and making sure you're counting the right one, so... Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yeah. I think, I think we've been talking about adjusting that with the attorney's office as well, so...
Perfect, perfect. And then, so my final comment is, is, and I'm going to support, and I'm going to vote yes on this thing here in a few moments. And it's really not that hard of a yes, it's the right, it's the right thing to do. We're at a crunch time in our city, we're at a crunch time in our state, in our nation on infrastructure projects. And, and I'm one of those that believe in limited government, but this absolutely falls underneath the few things that the government should be responsible for, is providing things like water and roads to our citizens that they need. Okay? So I'm going to be supportive. However, in February, when we come back to the final vote, I'm going to pop in what I call Steve's poison pill. And I'm going to ask two things. Did I get the blah, blah, blah award? Did you vote for me too, Sal? I'll even vote for myself tonight, the blah, blah, blah award. Okay. But let me talk about Steve's poison pill, and then we'll get out the door. So in February, when we come back for this vote, I'm going to inject a, a line in the, in the contract that says two things. Basically, we can't exceed money-wise what our projections are. At that point, we'll be at almost 100% projection build-out, so I want to say, we're not going over 429 to 449 to 489 to 509. We're not going to allow ourselves to do that. Secondly, if we come in under budget, which surprise, this might surprise some citizens, we occasionally come in under budget. If we come in under budget, that money doesn't stay in the department, get lost somewhere, that money gets immediately returned to the taxpayer. So I'm going to, and what's that? Ratepayer, yeah. Ratepayer taxpayer. So I'm going to put that in, in February. And so, all right, screen is clear. I won the blah, blah, blah award for the one that went on the longest tonight. That's all right, it's very rare. So we're going to do an electric vote. Yes is in support of the staff recommendation, and, and no is a no vote. All right, let's vote, everybody. All right, so this item passes unanimously, a 7-0 vote, not too frequent at Fresno City Council, but every council member voted yes. So that concludes our meeting. Thank you for everybody.
Counsel President, just, just to...
The charts and these PowerPoints have not been available to the public, even though they've been in the forums.